Y'all ready? Is that the kind of mood we're in today? All right. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Are you ready, Susan? Okay. Can we all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please? I pledge allegiance-
To the flag of the United States of America- And to the republic which stands one nation under all, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'd like to make a note that all commissioners are present. Are there going to be any agenda changes today?
No.
Okay, thank you. Now is the time that we will have public comment. If anybody has anything to say that is not on the agenda, now would be the time to speak. Seeing nobody going to the mic, we'll go ahead and close the public comment period. And we're going to go to item D, which is the Consent Agenda. That was the adoption of final resolution approving appeal of the denial for Step 2016-242.
Right. So if there are any changes you think ought to be made, then I would pull this item from the consent agenda so you can discuss it. Otherwise, just a motion to approve the consent agenda would adopt that.
I want to check with the commissioners because this was an email that we got at a later date and I think that some of them just got it. And did you have all -- did you all have time to read that?
Yeah.
I did.
And everybody's okay with it?
Yep, I am.
Okay. So then we will look for a motion to approve of the Consent Agenda item.
I move we approve as a Consent Agenda item the resolution in -- the resolution number 2018-043.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay, thank you. That motion carries 5-0. Did it 5-0? Did you -- you said yes?
I confirmed it.
Okay. Just making sure. Okay. Going on to our public hearings. The first one up is 2017-144. Looks like Gina's going to present that one for us. Thank you.
Good morning, everyone. So before you, you have a zoning amendment. Applicant landowner's name is Victoria Teller. It's for two parcels located at 1810 Love Creek Road in Arnold, which is about 3.5 miles northeast of the intersection of Moran Road and Love Creek in Avery. Just a short description. This all started with a lot line adjustment. We conditionally approved a lot line adjustment back in 2017. The purpose of the lot line adjustment was to alleviate the trespass of residential improvements from one parcel that happened to be built and constructed onto the other parcel. At the time of the trespass, Ms. Teller didn't own both parcels. She owned the residential parcel. The other parcel was owned by someone else. Subsequent to that, she's actually obtained ownership over both pieces and now is the consistent owner of both parcels. So the larger parcel was zoned TPZ. And as a result of the lot line adjustment, we will end up with a split zoning of a TPZ portion of property being merged with a rural residential zoned parcel. Just a quick overview of what the lot line adjustment will look like. The parcel that's all highlighted in gray is one legal parcel, which is 7.33 acres. The parcel that you see adjacent to that, which is traversed by Love Creek Road, is a smaller residential parcel that Ms. Teller's home resides. And that parcel is rural residential.
By the way, I want to congratulate you on the clarity of your graphics.
Good.
I could follow.
Thank you. So just a little history with the timber production zone. Back in 1976, the zone was implemented for the provisions of the Zeeburg-Warn Collier Forest Taxation Reform Act. Government code required us to come up with a zoning amendment. At the time, back in 1976, '77, '78, there was a considerable amount of land that was put into the TPZ. That is a 10-year term, much like the Ag Preserve, only one of the main differences is there's no contract associated with the timber preserve or timber production zone as there is with the Williamson Act. At the time of approval, there was a timber management plan that was required by government code and county code that was supposed to be approved by CAL FIRE and on file with CAL FIRE that basically set out the maintenance or the management of the property for its timber resources. So land under the TPZ is, of course, restricted to growing and harvesting timber. That is the main purpose of placing property in the timber production zone. In return, the property is assessed for growing and harvesting timber as the highest and best use. So kind of in a nutshell, you're much restricted to harvesting and growing timber. As a result, you will get a, you know, you will be appropriately taxed, which would be considerably where I just said considerably. It will be less than what your normal taxes would be. So the current situation with this particular parcel happens to be that there is -- we found no timber management plan on file with CAL FIRE. There's been one timber harvest plan and that was done by the previous property owner back in 2000. But other than the one timber harvest plan, there was nothing else that was found to be of record. The property, as I said before, is under new ownership. Ms. Teller does own the property. When it was previously put into the timber preserve, it was actually owned by someone else. She has no intent to harvest timber. She has not been currently managing the property for its timber resources. So it's really inappropriately zoned at this time. So when we talk about having to rezone a piece of property, of course, we go to the general plan and we have to determine consistent zoning that's compatible in the specific land use designations. So this particular parcel, actually both parcels, are designated through the Avery Hathaway Pines Community Plan. So if you'll notice, the larger parcel -- oh, I'm sorry, Susan. I don't know how to use your little pointer. So I'm just gonna -- I was told we were supposed to use the --
Use the mouse.
The mouse?
Yes.
Oh, it moved the screen. Okay. Well, maybe we just won't.
The little arrow on the mouse.
Okay. Well, so the larger parcel is actually designated -- the parcel that's zoned TPZ is actually designated as resource production with a minimum 40-acre parcel. Keep in mind that this parcel is only 7.33 acres in size. The dark green represents a rural residential designation and consistently, the parcel is actually zoned rural residential. So by itself, you know, everything seems to be okay. But when you start to look at moving those boundary lines, you start to create not only a split zoning, but we're also creating a split land use designation, which for most intense purposes is not an issue. But when we're trying to figure out what the consistent zoning is, it kind of posed a little bit of a challenge. But we'll go on and I think we've got it figured out. So when we looked at -- when we looked at the different zone districts in the Hathaway Community Plan, you'll see that the resource production designation has mostly resource zones, Ag Preserve, general agriculture, general forest, timber production, in addition to recreation, rural home industry, and public service. None of those really are compatible with the current property as it is in parcel size and actually for the purpose of what is being -- what is happening on the land. If you look at rural residential, you'll see some consistencies that timber production, rural home industry, and public service are also compatible in the rural residential zone. But knowing that, you know, there's no rural home industry, it's not public service, and we're trying to get out of the timber production zone, we have to go and see exactly where else we fall. So looking at the other zone districts, we've got rural residential and residential agriculture. Currently, the general plan indicates that all of our resource zones are found consistent in any land use designation that's set forth in the general plan. And of course, our resource zones are general agriculture, A1, AP, which is our Williamson Act zoning, Ag Preserve, general forest, timber production, as well as residential agriculture. So again, comparing back to the Avery Hathaway Pines Community Plan, all of our resource zones are highlighted. You'll notice that the only consistency, again, between the two happens to be timber production. But it's not real likely that you're going to actually have a real productive parcel of that size when you're looking at timber preserve. So we took it one step further and I went ahead and took a look at the future land use that is depicted in the general plan update. Again, we don't make findings of consistency with a plan that isn't approved or adopted. But this is the plan that we're moving forward with. And when we're looking at the zoning, it was kind of a nice thing to actually determine whether or not we were creating a problem that may have to be somehow alleviated in the future once the general plan is adopted. So all of this land is slated to be designated working land, which again, our working land designation basically is going to allow all of our resource zones, A1, AP, TPGF, as well as residential agriculture. So when we break it all down and we're looking at the intent of the property for land use, the purpose, in addition to consistency with the current general plan, the future land use designation as well as the community plan, we found that the residential agriculture zone best fit both parcels. Discussed it with the applicant landowner and she has absolutely no problems. She was just fine with it, although that's not what the original application asked for. In the initial application, she wasn't sure what we were asking to rezone it to. But during the process, we discovered that residential agriculture was probably the most consistent zoning that we could apply to this parcel, or I should say, both parcels. So in terms of SEQA, as a result of the zone change, there will be no physical change to the property at all. We're not increasing the density. There will be no further possibility of land division than what currently exists, which basically is none. The RA zone is found to be less intense than the current zone of timber production. So all in all, there's no significant effect on the environment as a result of the zone change. Therefore, we found the zoning amendment to be exempt from SEQA. So in conclusion, as said before, the residential agriculture zone was found to be more appropriate in terms of the purpose, the current intent, and use of the land, as well as the site development standards. The residential agriculture zone is currently consistent with the current general plan, the future land use in addition to the Hathaway Community -- Hathaway, Avery Hathaway Pines Community Plan. So our recommendation ultimately to you and to the board is to adopt the RA zone for both parcels. There is a slight difference in the two in that we are requesting an immediate rezone of the portion of land that is being merged out of the TPZ with that rural residential parcel because it creates an assessment problem and the assessor's office cannot assess value of the -- with the mixed zoning or the split zoning on that piece. So we're requesting an immediate rezone on that portion. There is a penalty to be paid for which we have discussed with the landowner. And again, she's willing to pay the penalty for immediately rezoning that portion. Our recommendation is to allow the remainder of that TPZ parcel to roll out of the timber preserve over the next 10 years, for which then it would be zoned residential ag.
I have some questions.
Okay.
I have no problem at all with the property line move. That looks -- makes sense, especially since you have something built over the current line and et cetera. It's the zoning as RA that I don't see why it can't be RR. And the only reason I really see -- I mean, it's not -- we have to make an exception to do it RA because of the size limitations. And it seems to me the main reason why you're making it RA is to fit with the coming general plan, which has this under working lands. But working lands under the coming general plan are supposed to be 20 to 40 acres in size. And none of these parcels-
Correct.
-- are 20 to 40 acres in size.
So are you saying, Mr. Ladish, that you have a concern over the fact that we're proposing to zone both parcels, residential agriculture, or just the portion of land that's being merged with the rural residential parcel?
I would say the -- I'm primarily concerned with the resulting conjoined parcel.
Okay. So if we notice, there is a split land use designation. So the rural residential zoning is not consistent in that timber land designation that is currently on the property.
But we're changing.
Yes, we're changing the portion. Let me go back.
I mean, it seems to me we've got tiny parcels that don't fit within either RA or the coming working lands designation. And the actual use is rural residential. And we have to make an exception to make it RA. It just, to me, it doesn't make much sense. And also, I think by having it RR, you have less danger of there being a SEQA problem.
So if we zone the parcel RR, then the applicant has to apply for a general plan amendment. Because currently, the rural residential zoning is not found consistent with that timber land designation, nor is it a resource zone that is found by the general plan to be consistent in all land use designations. And not that we're making a finding of consistency, but it's not going to be a consistent zoning within the future land use of working land either.
But we end up with something that doesn't -- a designation that doesn't fit the actual use of the property.
But it does. Because the rural resident -- the residential ag zone is found consistent in all land use designations, but more specifically, is consistent in the Hathaway Pines Community Plan under the rural residential designation. So the rural residential designation allows both rural residential and residential agriculture. Keep in mind that neither one of these parcels have any public services such as water and sewer. It's dependent on onsite sewage disposal and a well, which in most cases, your rural residential zoning, you will find that it either has one or both of those components and therefore, it is a residential zone rather than a resource zone.
If I could rein here for a minute, too. I think it sounds like your concern is the fact that we have two non-conforming lots due to parcel size. That's not uncommon. It's already inconsistent with the general plan designation for the Hathaway Pines Community Plan. And if you look, you know, throughout the county, you will find pockets of smaller parcels. And it'll just be a legal non-conforming use. It's really not an issue.
It's not a big deal.
It's not a big deal.
Okay. How much land is being added? In other words, the upper part of this?
You know, the lot line adjustment did not depict a size. I kind of roughly estimated -- the applicant roughly estimated that is about a half an acre. I think it might be a little bit more because the parcel just to the south of it in the green happens to be a 1.3, I think. Yeah.
And it looks as if it's adding at least half again as much as that.
Right.
I would estimate to be about 2 acres.
That's what I estimated it to be is about 2. She thought it was more like a half. But again, the lot line adjustment didn't indicate.
Didn't it?
No.
Okay. So you see no problem in having inconsistencies because it happens all the time. And this is the most consistent way.
It's the most consistent inconsistent zone we could find.
That's, okay.
It was a struggle finding the appropriate zoning for this. And we felt that this was the most appropriate, given all the circumstances. It does result in two substandard parcels, but they're already substandard.
Yeah, right. And why can't the remaining part of the larger parcel be rezoned at this time?
Immediately?
Yeah.
It could, but the property owner would have to pay a penalty through the assessor's office.
But that's the -- the penalty is to make up for the tax breaks that she's getting now, right?
The penalty is for the immediate rezone. What's going to happen over, much like the Ag Preserve, over the next 10 years, they will start kind of readjusting that assessed value. And at the 10th year, she will then be paying the full current assessed value of the property.
Because it -- well, how do they get the special taxation? And I realize this owner didn't do anything wrong. I understand that.
Right, right. So at the time, there were numerous parcels.
But there's no plan. How do they get the tax benefit?
I don't know. You know, and maybe there was a plan that was approved, but CAL FIRE didn't have it on file. I asked numerous times and they couldn't find one. So I -- we're not the keeper of the plan. So there wasn't anything I could do. But they could not find a management plan on file.
It's not uncommon that a lot of small parcels that went into the timber production zone, when it was first started, it looked like it was a great tax break for someone. And then they realized timber harvest is work. And, you know, creating a harvest plan and a lot of these smaller parcels just weren't productive enough on their own. And so we find this a lot throughout the state, that smaller parcels that are in TPZ probably shouldn't be in TPZ because they're really not productive timber units.
Okay. I'll hold off until later because I think the owner has a few things that she could clarify.
Does any of the other commissioners have questions?
No.
Okay. Are you the appellant or not?
I'm the owner.
You're the application. Okay. Can you please come up to the mic? Thank you. You had some things you wanted to clarify that?
No, I was just telling you I'm the owner if you had questions.
Okay.
I'm sorry I ran late. I deliver food on Thursdays to the kids at school, so.
Oh, thank you for that. Okay. So I believe that Mr. Ladish has a couple of questions for you.
I take it you're happy with the conclusion that the planning department has come up with as far as the rezoning to RA of the new combined property?
Yeah.
Okay.
And I'm happy to keep the other half in the timber preserve. It was there from the original owners way, way back. Had, I think, 100 acres. And that's how it went into the timber preserve. And then when the original owners died, the four kids, it got divided up into four, you know, pieces. And as they sell off, I bought it from one of the daughters. And that's how come it's a smaller parcel. And it gets grandfathered in because it's already in the timber preserve.
And a question for the planning department. Is that why it was classified working area or working lands in that it was the combined ownership that permitted the smaller parcel to be put into working land? Or do you know?
Well, the working land designation is really sort of that in between the residential properties and the larger resource production zone. So it's part in dealing with parcel size and sort of what's out there.
Yeah, but it's 20 to 40 acres supposedly working lands.
Yeah.
When designations were made, did you consider common ownership in considering whether the 20 to 40 acres?
No, we didn't. We didn't go into that level of-
I'm sorry. Just a moment. We'll come to public comment in a minute.
We didn't go into that level of detail of looking at the ownership pattern. We looked at the surrounding parcels, what was, you know, primarily being used for, the potential use of those parcels.
Well, I'd like to commend the owner for trying to get this all squared away.
Yeah.
Your house in the right parcel and all that stuff.
Well, that's the problem was, you know, way back, it used to be the tree or the fence. And everybody built on the wrong side of the parcel. So I've already gone through one lot line adjustment. And if it had been taken care of back when it went through, you know, we wouldn't be here. But what happened is when they put the pin, it's in the middle of my driveway. So they now own, you know, half my driveway and, you know, part of my, right up to my house. So that's why I ended up having to buy that parcel.
Yeah.
And that's all I want is if I go to sell it or if I build or do anything on it, they would be my neighbor on half of my driveway.
Yeah.
And so that's the only reason why I want to divide it, you know, off.
Thank you.
So before you go, you are Victoria Teller, correct?
Yes, sir.
Sorry. I think we needed to clarify that.
Yes, I am.
But you said something about timber preserve or the production. Are you intending to keep the rest of that property in timber production at all or?
If I, you know, need -- I, when I bought the property, no one told me what I'm supposed to do. But it had been timbered by the daughter. It had gone through one of those timber preserve things.
What I understand from the staff's recommendation in this resolution we're supposed to be considering is that they're recommending an immediate withdrawal from the TPZ of the portion of your land that's with the 034 parcel, the larger one.
I do.
Do you understand all that?
Yeah. I do have a lumber company, a timbering company, that's working on Love Creek Road. And I had them -- I'm on their list to timber a lot of the dead trees and the trees as they, you know, get to me. I was on their list as of last year. So they're going down the list of us small owners.
So that's not necessarily harvesting. You're just taking down the dead bark beetle trees.
And anything else that needs to be taken down. I don't know what, where I'm supposed to apply.
So I guess what he's trying to ask you, and I'm sorry for interrupting you, is that if you pull out of the TPZ, you're going to have a penalty to pay and you're aware of that, correct?
I do on that small portion, yes. But I want to stay in on the other one and find out who I'm supposed to contact to harvest. I have no idea. This piece of property came to me with no directions. So I don't know.
No owner's manual.
Yeah, there's no owner's manual. So yes. Whatever they need me to do, I will do it.
So are we considering something that's inconsistent with her understanding?
Yes. I think we're talking about two different things. One is the gradual, the 10-year rollout period, which, or to keep it in TPZ. To keep it in TPZ, she would need to hire a forester, restock the property after it's harvested, create a timber management plan. I don't believe she has any, my understanding is she has no intention of doing that. And the fact that it's substandard, it's not actually in active production, it would be appropriate to take it out of TPZ. It'd be like someone in an Ag Preserve that's not actually farming the property.
So she can still have this company remove dead trees?
Of course, yes. And she could harvest the timber, you know, on, even if it's not in TPZ. It's just that the TPZ is intended to encourage productive timber, you know, working timber production. And to do that, you know, there's the CAL FIRE, Department of Forestry, Fire Protection, has certain requirements in order to meet those criteria. And the county, you know, is also responsible for ensuring that the property owners in TPZ are meeting those requirements. The former owner, nor she, is doing that right now. So it's appropriate to remove it from TPZ and put it in a zone that's compatible with the surrounding uses and as well as appropriate for what she wants to do with it. And my understanding is she could hold on to it,[1728.89] understanding is she could hold on to it, maybe build on it, maybe sell to someone else who'd want to build a home on it and enjoy rural living in the county.
Now, the former owner did do the harvest thing that they're supposed to do.
But after harvesting, if that had been done in 2000, I understand, you know, there should have been restocking of the timber and working with Cal Fire to, you know, update the management plan of what's, you know, over the next 30, 40 years of growing another crop of timber.
What's the name of the company that's removing your tree? Never mind. Dead trees have got my attention.
Yeah. Yeah, he's working on Love Creek Road. That's all I know. I got his phone number and I contacted him last year, so I'm on their list.
That's great.
Okay, is there any other questions?
No.
Okay, so we'll go ahead and take public comment now if we need to come back to you. Okay, thank you. Okay, is there anybody in the audience that would like to make public comment on this particular application?
My name is John Gibson. I live at 813 Will Creek Drive, Folsom, California. And I'm the owner of the parcel. Let's see, if you can, can you scroll down a little Gina to the next, do you have it? Yeah, well, it doesn't matter.
I can't move the-
Yeah, it's, it's the owner of the parcel, directly, let's see, directly up above there. It's just a 10 acre parcel.
Okay.
And it's directly, that was actually placed in TPZ zoning as the owner has correctly indicated. And I'm actually the brother of the lady that you mentioned, the daughter. And actually, it was, it was not placed, as a matter of fact-
Okay, I need you to address us, please. Thank you.
Yeah, it was not actually placed in TPZ zoning at the time she mentioned. And the act, there was quite a bit of misinformation in, that you heard there. The act requires only, just as any land use, you, before you're able to harvest timber, depending on the size of your property, whether it's 100 acres and so forth, you have to have a registered professional forester. That's what's required before you can file, you must file a timber harvest plan. Now, for certain parcels of certain size, for certain purposes, you may get an exemption from that timber harvest plan. And that is what we did. And that is why she continues to say there's no timber management plan on the parcel, on both, there actually is none on that parcel, and there's four parcels there. But indeed, they have been managed for timber consistently for, how many years is that? Since, that's actually over 20 years. Anyway, the question, the question before you is quite clear here. Well, maybe it isn't clear. I don't know whether the owner intends to remove the entire 7.33 acres, and I guess Gina can answer that, from, is it, you're currently in TPZ zoning into RR1 or RA? I didn't understand that, I'll admit.
Our recommendation is to zone both parcels in their entirety into the residential agriculture zone.
So you're withdrawing all, you're withdrawing the entire 7.33 acres from TPZ zoning?
But that's only eventually, right? I mean, that's the-
The portion of land that is merging with the smaller residential parcel will be immediately rezoned, for which Ms. Teller will have to pay a penalty to the assessor's office. The remainder of that parcel will roll out over the next 10 years, for which then she will be assessed a full value of the land.
Okay, is there anything further you'd like to stay? Because you can only get five minutes there and you're getting close here.
Yeah, I would like to enter into the record the letter that I did file. Did you receive my letter in the mail?
No.
Oh, you did not? Okay, I do have the letter. And it summarizes my-
If you're going to hand something over, you need to give it to the net, please.
...in opposition to the action for a variety of reasons. Number one, as the discussion here was quite convoluted, many of the members had questions. I have questions. The project description, Gina, I mean, it wasn't, it really isn't accurate. It's not quite clear what's going to happen. That's number one. Number two, you're under the California Environmental Quality Act. I know you're thinking of an exemption for it, but you have quite a bit of, there's, you didn't tell us about the surrounding land uses. You didn't talk about the conformance with the Avery Community Plan. You didn't talk about the fact that there is a trout stream directly adjacent to the property if those land use changes would occur. And so I would have to humbly request that it has to be at least a mitigated negative declaration as a minimum, and it has to be circulated so all the landowners of that area are familiar with it and have a chance to comment on it. Okay, that's, that would be, and I'll stop with my five minutes. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Unless if any of you have any questions.
And I'm, just for a net, if you could say your name one more time so that she-
Yeah, John Gibson is my full name and I live in Folsom, California.
Okay. Thank you very much. Is there any further public comment?
No.
Okay, seeing that, I'm going to close public comment, bring it back to the commissioners.
Okay, I have a, taking up where the last person left off. I think if we have opposition here, and it's in part on the basis of the SEQA exemption, I think maybe the department ought to take a better look, excuse me, not a better look, a more full look at that question. As if we're going to have questions arise in the future on the SEQA exemption, why for us to approve and then for the board to approve, we might just be getting into more problems. I, you've convinced me as far as the zoning designation being the least inconsistent with the most things, but I'm concerned about the SEQA.
If I could make one other comment.
I'm sorry, public comment's closed. I'm sorry.
I'm interested in if anybody else has the same problem.
I'd like to hear if that's possible.
The public?
Mr. Gibson.
Okay, Mr. Gibson, come on up, please. I have to have you speak from the mic.
Yeah. I just want to be sure that the understanding was, it was the change in TPZ zoning was a basis for the opposition in the record. The lot line adjustment wouldn't have any, I had no objection to that.
Yeah, because the lot line adjustment cannot occur without-
And that already occurred.
Yeah. You do realize that this doesn't affect your property, correct, Mr. Gibson?
No, that is not correct.
It's not?
That was, I mean, the zone-
Okay, let's, let's, let's bring it back. I think, okay, the lot line adjustment cannot occur without the rezone, correct?
Correct.
Because then we would have the split zoning.
Right.
Okay.
The only, the only thing you could do is immediately rezone the portion being merged. And if you so choose to leave the remainder in the TPZ as inconsistent as we're finding it, that's an option.
Or if you feel that it's important to do an initial study and see if there's other potential significant or potential impacts, then we could, you could defer it back, refer it back to staff and we could continue it off calendar to conduct an initial study.
I think that's what I would prefer doing because I think there might be a question as far as the RA, the uses permitted in the RA compared to the uses permitted under the TPZ might be seen as broader and might have more environmental impact so that this-
Just a moment, please.
This, that we might be getting ourselves into complications that with an initial study and a full look at things, we-
Okay, can we get a little bit more clarification from Mr. Gibson? Because I'm not real clear as to, as to the objection.
You know what? I think, Gina, the best thing to do is that we put it off calendar and then you guys can talk with him and also talk with forestry as far as the TPZ and find out what the effects would be around surrounding neighbors. Just at least doing a little bit of homework and research because I can't rely on the public to be our information.
Absolutely.
And I think we need to go to the source of how it would be impacted. And we could reach out to forestry and the timber harvest, looking more, a little bit into that is what I'm thinking. Do you all agree with that? My only question that I was going to have for you is on the boundary issue that we were talking about. She owns both lots that the house is over the property line, so nobody's going to come and cause her any issues because she owns both pieces of property.
No, but she cannot sell the larger parcel until the trespass is alleviated.
Okay.
And it's my understanding that that is her intent, is to sell the larger parcel. Obviously, she has to do the lot line adjustment in order to alleviate that trespass of those improvements before she can do anything. If she just wants to keep the two parcels under her own ownership, it makes no difference to us. She knows there's a problem, but it doesn't make any difference to us, you know, whether or not her driveway and septic system are on the adjacent parcel. But at the point that she goes to put any one of those parcels up for sale, there's an issue. And she's not going to be able to sell it until she alleviates that trespass.
Okay.
So if I, can I interject something here? I'm a little confused in some of the language of the proposed resolution where we're talking about parcel 033. And it sounds like that's 7 point whatever acres.
Currently, it's 7.33 acres, which includes that portion of land on the other side of Love Creek Road adjacent to the residential parcel.
And is that Mr. Gibson's property?
No. He doesn't own either one of these parcels. He owns property to the north.
Who owns the property to the left that apparently is going to be impacted by this?
Ms. Teller does. Victoria Teller owns both pieces in question.
Oh, I thought it was just this upper right.
No, she owns both legal parcels outright.
All right, the one that looks like Pennsylvania sticking out to the left there. All right. Okay, I misunderstood that. I thought she did not own that.
No, Mr. Gibson's family owned the property prior to Ms. Teller's purchase.
Right.
And they own property directly to the north. But he does not currently own the property that we're proposing to zone, or I should say rezone. And the rezone will not affect any other properties. It will just affect Ms. Teller's property.
But this resolution then apparently requires you to remove that larger piece to the, I guess it's the left.
That is our recommendation because the property is not currently, and there is no intention of managing the property for its timber resources. So it's not actively in production, which is the whole purpose of the zone.
As I understand it, the purpose of the zone is to continually grow and harvest timber.
Right.
It's, if you cut down a bunch of trees, you plant more-
You can still, yeah.
And-
And you can still cut trees even though you're not in the TPZ. You can get a timber harvest plan. You can get a less than three acre conversion. You can do those things absent the TPZ zone.
I guess I just sensed that she may have a different understanding than what this resolution says. I'm not sure at all. It's a little gray to me.
You had something you wanted to say?
Is it feasible to list the permitted uses under the TPZ zoning and then compare that to the permitted uses under the RA zoning?
Yes. You want me to do that now?
TP zoning currently allows accepted farming practices, commercial agriculture, accepted ranching practices, fish and wildlife management, hunting and fishing preserves, management and erosion control, not sure what that is, but proj, let's see, fire station, ranger station, information center, lumber mill, sawmill, and forest product processing, one primary single-family residence per legal parcel, group care home of six or fewer clients, family daycare. Upon findings, upon findings by the planning commission, the use is consistent with the purpose of this chapter. The use may be, oh, you can add uses that you find consistent in that zone district and with the other uses, basically. Special events are allowed, yard and garage sales, accessory dwellings, of course, are permitted. There are a few conditional uses, such as a commercial kennel, an expanded group care home of more than six clients, mineral resource extraction and production, public utility buildings and facilities, wood chipping and mulching, and target shooting range. Under the residential agriculture zone, you are allowed agricultural operations, agricultural accessory structures, agricultural product storage, field rock extraction, forestry, greenhouse, wholesale nursery. And there are some performance standards associated with these. And without going back and looking, I'm not sure whether these parcels would apply. But if we wanted to get that detailed, we could. Incidental and accessory structures, processing and manufacturing, including agriculture processing, a winery, a wood yard. Under residential uses, they are allowed to have a single-family residence, residential care facility, six or fewer clients, rural home business, single-family dwelling again, oh, accessory dwelling and a single-family residence, yard or garage sales, agriculture product sales, which includes on-farm sales, roadside stand, produce stand, tasting room, and U-PIC operations, residential, or I should say recreational and educational. They would be allowed agritourism activities if there was a bona fide agricultural operation on site. In addition to agricultural environmental education center, again, associated with the bona fide ag operation, special events associated with the bona fide ag operation. Under agricultural service business, you would be allowed an agricultural contractor base, contractor base yard, horticulture and landscaping services, maintenance, repair, storage services, rural home veterinary clinic, a truck yard, veterinary clinic. And because most of these have a superscript of two and three, let me just go and see what those performance standards are. Two. So two puts, sets forth a limitation on being in conjunction with a bona fide ag operation, sets a minimum parcel size requirement of 10 acres with more than 3% of the total land or 10 acres, whichever is less. And also sets a minimum for persons employed. Uses also sets a limitation on the minimum parcel size of 20 acres or contiguous acre, parcels totaling 20 acres in size, which this parcel does not comply with. That's performance standard number three, so that knocks quite a few of these off the list, actually.
Thank you. Now, that being the case, what is your judgment as to whether or not this project is exempt from further SEQA analysis?
Basically, there's not going to be any physical change in the property. If you'll notice that a lot of these uses are not going to be allowed simply because there's not enough acreage. They're not proposing any agricultural activities on the property, although you're right, it is permitted. But the fact that there will be no physical change of the property, you can have a single-family residence on both parcels. You can have an accessory dwelling on both parcels, which is the primary intent. In addition, harvesting the property for its timber production, I guess, could be a lot more invasive to the environment, so to speak, than say, for instance, having a resident or a small-scale agricultural operation, which, again, the parcel size really limits what they have the ability to do on the parcel, because a lot of these are strapped to a 20 acre minimum.
Which is, is that 20 acre minimum for RA normally, I'm a-
No, there's performance standards that are attached to a lot of these uses.
No, no, but I mean, just the-
Five acres.
Five acres.
Five acres for an RA zone. For a newly created parcel in the RA zone, it has to be five acres.
Except when you have an exception.
Okay. We do have an exception. I really still feel like we need to take this off calendar and let's do a little bit more research, especially on the TPC, maybe looking at a negative declaration, just to make sure that we are processing this correctly and we don't end up with an issue down the road.
Okay.
I don't know how you all feel.
That's the way I feel.
I agree.
Okay.
I agree.
All right.
It'll be fine.
So you want a motion to put it off calendar, do a few, a little bit more research on this?
That would be appropriate at this point.
Okay. So just for clarity, your further research includes an initial study with a, either hopefully finding- finding a negative declaration or, at the worst case, a mitigated negative declaration.
We can't tell you what the result's going to be, but.
Well, I'm, I'm just.
I would move that we take this off.
I can pretty much assure that it won't be an EIR. Yeah.
Right.
Right. I just move that we take this off calendar to give the planning department staff a chance to further consider the SEQA questions involved.
Okay.
And I think I'd limit the motion reconsideration to that effect. Well, of course, if you decide that you want to take different actions than what you're currently recommending because of the SEQA consideration.
Okay, can I just stop you for one second before we get a second on that?
Yes.
Because I have no idea where you just went.
Okay.
I just want a simple motion that they need to further research this.
I.
I don't need to add SEQA and everything else into it. They need to decide what the appropriate action is.
I'd make a motion that be reconsidered to reconsider whatever the appropriate action might be. That's what you want, right?
Thank you, Commissioner Latish. Do we have a second for that? And it would be off calendar until.
Could I perhaps restate that motion?
Am I in?
Yes, you could restate that motion.
There would be, move to continue the item off calendar with direction to staff to do further environmental review.
Environmental analysis.
Yeah, and that's fine, but the further environmental review might lead to different conclusions.
That as well, yeah, we understand that.
I think a motion was just made to that effect.
Do I have a second?
Do we have a second?
Second it.
Thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay.
Can I have a copy of that letter?
Right.
Yeah. I don't know how that works. Okay. Do you guys need a break or can we keep going?
Keep going.
Keep going.
Okay. Going on to item number two, two zero one eight dash zero one seven, zoning amendment for Mark Wilson. Miguel, are you handling this one?
Yes, I am.
It's an easy day today. You got this.
All right.
We just need to hear you. We're good.
Before we go any further, I wanted to state that I know the applicant and I'm a friend of the applicant, but I have no financial dealings with the applicant and I don't see any need to recuse myself from this, but I just wanted to make that public.
Thank you.
Very good morning to the planning commission. This is Miguel with the Calaveras County Planning Department. Today, I'm here to present application for a zoning amendment, two thousand eighteen dash zero one seven for Mark Wilson. The, this parcel is located in, at three, thirty-five fifty-four Main Street in Val Lecito. It is approximately, or the parcel is point one eight acres. A little bit of background to the parcel. In the seventies, it was an unclassified zone parcel. Its use was a duplex at the time. Since then, the use changed to commercial activities. It was Napa Auto Parts for a while, then it was a alarm company for a while. Also, since then, there was a zoning amendment that changed the unclassified to RC, which is rural commercial. Today, we're here because the applicant wants to rezone the parcel from rural commercial to two-family residential, R two, for the purposes of reestablishing the building on the parcel to be a duplex once more. The reason this can't be done with its current zoning is because of density requirements that the RC zone has that differ from the density requirements that R two zone has. So real quick into the presentation. Once more, the parcel's located in Val Lecito. Here's an aerial image of the parcel. As you can see, about ninety percent of the parcel has been developed. There is a structure, there is a concrete parking lot, and towards the back, there's two storage sheds. So once more, it's going from the, or to request us to go from rural commercial to two-family residential. The purpose of the rural commercial is to provide land for commercial uses in small towns and little or isolated areas and just in community centers. The proposed zoning is to provide land for conventional duplexes or attached single-family houses where both units are owned individually. The current land use designation with the general plan is of, it's in the Val Lecito Community Center. The proposed zoning is compatible with the land use designation in the general plan. The draft general plan, or the general plan update, it's, will fall under historic center, which is also compatible with the R two. The parcel itself is developed with a structure and two storage shed. It does have district water and sewer. There is no new development proposed, only interior modifications to convert it back into a duplex, and it must comply with all building and, or with current building and fire codes. Here's a picture of the structure and the parking lot. This is the front of the parcel from Main Street. Compatibility with the surrounding area. So the proposed use is compatible with the surrounding area. The majority of the parcels surrounding the subject parcel are, have residential uses. The surrounding zones around the subject parcel are unclassified and rural commercial. Here's a map that depicts that. The parcel is highlighted with a star. Everything around it is unclassified, and there are a few rural commercial. However, all of these parcels are, or the majority of these parcels have residential uses. So this zoning amendment, or the proposed use would be compatible with what's currently there. In conclusion, this is an application for to rezone from the RC to the R two. It's consistent with the general plan. It's compatible with surrounding areas. It's encouraged by the general plan and zoning code. It's consistent with the general plan update, allows more opportunity for housing in the county, and it's categorically exempt in the SEQA guidelines under fifteen thirty point three point B. So that's it for the presentation. If there's any questions.
Pretty scary, huh? Is the applicant here?
I am.
Okay, can you come on up, please? If you could just state your name for the record and.
Mark Wilson.
Okay, did he do a good job presenting or do you need to add more?
He did a great job.
Okay, thank you. Do you have anything you want to add?
No, I think it's pretty straightforward.
Okay, thank you very much. Does anybody have any questions?
No.
No? Okay, thank you. Is there any public comment on this applicant? Okay, seeing none, I will close public comment, bring it back to the commissioners for deliberation. Anybody have anything they want to say, add?
No, I don't have any problem with this. I do have some suggestions for the resolution.
Okay.
Under the fourth where as clause, the date should be July twelfth, not tenth. And then, on the resolution part, paragraph one, the evidence, the third sentence says conversion or existing small structures from unused to another, et cetera, should be conversion of. And then I would add a sentence at the end to the effect of, the only modifications required are interior modifications and those improvements to bring the existing building up to code. That's it.
Okay, thank you. Everybody okay with the changes?
Well, I just question whether there are any exterior mods. I think we're, I think he's allowed to do some minimal exterior. I don't know. I think with Commissioner Rooster was suggesting the word, the only changes required are.
Interior.
Required.
Required, yeah, he can still do exterior.
All right.
Okay, any further? Somebody want to make a motion?
I move to approve the resolution as amended.
Thank you. Oh. Do you want to read the recommendation or?
So staff recommends approval of the amended resolution, two thousand eighteen dash zero four seven.
Thank you, I should have done that first. I apologize. Okay, so I have a motion. Now can I get a second, please? Thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Okay, let's take a ten-minute break real quick and then we'll come back and start wrapping some things up here. Are we ready? Okay, so we're going to go on to item number three, and Mr. Greenberg was here the whole time and now I don't see him. Can we see if he's out in the hall so he knows we're starting? There we go. Okay, thank you. Okay, so we're going to go on to item number three, two zero one six dash zero one six. Peter, you're going to handle this one?
Yes, I am.
Okay.
I'm sitting in for Scott on this item. So this is zoning amendment, two thousand sixteen zero one six for Matt Greenberg. It is an amendment from the general commercial plan development zone, C two PD two, Business Park Plan Development, M four PD. It's currently developed with existing commercial building. It's located at the end of Commercial Way in the Hathaway Pines area. There's the aerial image showing what's there. It's the developed site, including the fifty-six hundred square foot building, ten thousand square feet of paid parking. Adjacent parcel to the east and west is zoned M four PD. The remaining parcels on Commercial Way are zoned C two PD. There's a photo of the building, the parking area. It's designated industrial under the Avery Hathaway Pines Community Plan and actually brings this parcel into conformance with the general plan, said C two is not listed as a compatible zone. There is the Hathaway, Avery Hathaway Pines Community Plan Land Use Map, and it shows the area with the subject parcel right there. There are a number of policies and implementation measures of the, of the community plan, sorry, brain fart there. And one of them is that all industrial property have the PD overlay, so we're recommending that the PD overlay be retained on the property. And here's a showing of what the existing zoning is like in the area.
Can you go back to that for one second, please?
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
Again, there's the parcel where the arrow is. So we prepared an initial study for this project and found that there were no significant impacts. There were no comments or concerns received from the public or other agencies, and we recommend that you pass a motion to sign resolution, two thousand eighteen zero four nine, recommending the board adopt the initial study and approve the zoning amendment. Any questions?
I'm sure. First, I want to praise the thoroughness of the initial study, and it gets, it's remarkably complete. I do have a question, and I think it's just my misunderstanding. On page three of the twenty-six pages of the initial study, up at the box at the top, environmental factors potentially affected, is this, there are no check marks in there, and is this after you've done the initial study and the mitigations? This is when you go through and do it, is it check on it?
Yes, so what we typically do is review the initial study and see if there's any potentially significant impacts. If there are, then we go back and check these boxes and identify either that they're significant and unavoidable, or they're significant to the point that we need to prepare an EIR, or that they're adequately mitigated. But in this case, I don't believe there are any mitigation measures.
The mitigation measure that's presented is the overlay of the PD area.
Oh, under land use and planning, yes.
And it just seemed to me that since there was, and this is just for my education, under land use and planning.
You want to remove the PD? Me too.
I actually would not have checked that box as significant on page seventeen, or less than significant with mitigation. I think since the PD is already there, we're not proposing to eliminate that, I would have said that it's less than significant. It's sort of a judgment call. Given that, it might have been appropriate to check the land use and planning box on page three.
That's, it just seemed to me that if, if it's less than significant mitigation, then it must be a potential.
Right.
Okay, I just want to make sure. Yeah, I agree with you that the PD is there, so it isn't a mitigation that we're requiring.
Right.
And if this, if the PD disappears, then this would imply that something would have to be done.
Did you push the button?
I'm pushing my button. Thank you. It would seem that something would have to be done in order to mitigate the potential significant problem. It seems to me to make much more sense just to go into it saying, there's a PD on this and therefore no mitigations required.
I would agree with you.
Okay.
Well, just so I'm clear here, on page three, the box at the top that Commissioner Latish referred to, says the environmental factors checked below would be potentially affected by this project involving at least one impact. It is a quote, potentially significant impact, end quote, as indicated by the checklist on the following pages. The following pages do not contain a check next to, under potentially significant impact. So the box at the top of page three is consistent with the rest of the environmental analysis. I don't see an issue here.
Well, my question was, is that, is this, do you do this box on page three after you've done the entire initial study? You know, I mean, it's, when, if you check something that says that it's less than significant with mitigation, by then, to me, that means there was a potential, potentially significant impact. And so it's whether this box at the top of page three is going into this process, is there a potentially significant impact? Or is it after you've done everything else, you've eliminated that by finding there's mitigation? That's.
The practice and procedure, and this is a format that's provided to us from the state in the SEQA guidelines, it's a suggested, recommended form that we can use. Rather than reinventing the wheel, we use this form. And Mr. Latish is absolutely correct. It's potentially significant unless it can be mitigated. And so the practice is that even if it's not potentially significant, you know, that the end result is we can't mitigate it, we would still typically mark this box if the less than significant with mitigation finding box is checked. It's not exactly what it says in the header, and so you're right as well, but the practice is that you would check that box if there's a potentially significant impact, whether it can be mitigated or not.
Bring the applicant in. Are you all ready to hear from him?
Sure.
Okay. Good morning.
Good morning, commissioners, Madam Chair, Director Mauer. My name is Matt Greenberg. I'm the owner-operator of Alpine Business Park and Self-Storage. We're located in Hathaway Pines. Before the board. Before the board, I'd like to actually state that I had a really good set of conversations with Scott Spear. He's been very helpful to me, planner, during this process. And today I'm your applicant for the zoning amendment here at 5146 Commercial Way.
Okay, is there any questions?
No.
That's a good sign. Okay, well, if you don't mind then, if you have nothing further to say, I'll go to public comment.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Is there any public comment on this project? No? Okay, we'll close public comment, bring it back to the Commissioners. And then just for clarification purposes, after all the discussion about the checking the box, was there a proposal to check the box or just leave it as it is? I need clarity.
Well, because the box under land use is checked as not, less than significant with mitigation, I would think that we, that the box on page three under land use should have a check mark on it. However, I really think the fact that the planning, that we already have this PD overlay, I don't know that it even should be looked at as a mitigation. It is a fact and I think I would approach it another way, but I don't know that we need to change this.
Okay, so we're not checking the box? You're not making a proposal to check the box?
Well, I'm not going to make a big thing out of it, I think the box should have been checked.
Okay. Then, does any other Commissioners have any comments?
I would leave it the way it is. It's consistent with the way the firm, form is set up.
Okay, thank you.
As long as we're both right, well, we'll draw up some field. The question, there's a statement on that a mitigated negative declaration will be prepared. Now, this by itself, the initial study, is the mitigated negative declaration? I don't see a page in here that says.
I read that as well.
This is the mitigated negative declaration.
This is the initial study.
Yeah.
And the negative declaration or mitigated declaration is a combination of this information as well as a form that we will fill out.
Okay.
And when it's approved, to me it's approved by the board. Form that we fill out that says we relied on this information and we file a notice of determination.
Oh, okay, so it will be prepared, but it has not been prepared, so we don't see it.
The final document has not been prepared, but this, you know, the initial analysis, initial study, obviously has been prepared and circulated as required by SEACL.
Okay. Peter, would you like to read the recommendation?
Staff recommends that you adopt resolution 2018-049 recommending the Board of Supervisors adopt the initial study and mitigate a negative declaration and approve zoning amendment 2016-016.
Thank you. Can I get a motion please?
So moved.
Second?
I'll second it.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All done, thank you. Okay, moving on to number four, 2016-244, appeal by Jacob Farrar. Morning Ben. We're ready.
All right, Ben Diamond, Planner Trainee. This is appeal 2016-244 by Jacob Farrar. On behalf of Nicem Group Incorporated. On June 20th, 2016, a application for 22,000 square feet of mixed light cultivation was submitted to the Planning Department. On May 18th, 2017, code compliance conducted an inspection of this site. And at that time, they found unpermitted grading, unpermitted ground mounted solar and electrical from the solar to the hoop houses on the property. A correction notice was issued to the appellant, instructing them to get those things permitted. They were issued the necessary permits. However, some issues were identified during an inspection by the building inspector and a follow-up inspection was never scheduled, so the permits were allowed to expire. And the grading permit is still currently in deposit status. A letter was sent to the engineer on March 13th, 2018, to which there has been no response. And based on that, the appellant is still out of compliance with code and is denied.
I have some questions. You just referred to a subsequent inspection by the Building Department and a staff report refers to it as well that found issues with the ground mounted solar that needed to be fixed. And the draft resolution says this building inspector issued a correction notice. The file that I received does not contain an inspection report by the building inspector or a correction notice. Do those exist and if so, can we have them?
I'm not certain if when the building inspectors do find issues, they do issue that, but I could certainly try to find it if there is such in correction notice application at inspection. Otherwise, I was under the assumption that it was a verbal fix these and then schedule a follow-up inspection to confirm that they were fixed.
The Building Department does issue a correction notice on paper, absolutely does.
Building Department does issue correction notices on paper. And I see that the appellant is holding up his correction notice, so he has a copy present here today.
Okay, then the correction list that we do have of the May 18th, 2017 inspection refers to an email letter from the engineer about what they were doing. My packet doesn't have that either. Can we have that?
I believe that was in reference to the grading permit and I also do not have that email.
Okay, last question there. The March 13th, 2018 letter from Public Works says attached is a check print for the project, but it's not attached.
That would be the large set of plans. I did not ask for a copy of that from Public Works.
Okay. Thank you.
So it was on those plans that Public Works made questions?
Yeah, the necessary corrections.
You say that all the permits have expired, but the grading permit has not, right?
Yes, the permit for the hoop houses, the ground mounted solar and the electrical trenching have expired and the grading is still in deposit status.
Okay. Now, is there?
Deposit status means it's not been issued.
It's not been issued.
Not been issued at some preliminary.
They paid a deposit for their initial review, there were corrections that were needed and no follow-up on that.
So is there a set time for the applicant to request additional inspections? I'm looking at attachment four. See if I can find it again. The recommendations for denial indicates that the responsibility to call and request these inspections falls on the property owner or the assigned agent acting on behalf of the property owner. This is from code compliance. I'm just wondering, is there, is it just a reasonable time for a reasonable person to request reinspection?
I believe there's 180 day timeframe from inspection to the next inspection. I'm not positive of that and I don't see anyone from the Building Department or the code here that could definitively answer that question, but there is a defined time.
There is a defined time.
That you need to continue to move on. Otherwise, the Building Department will allow the permit to expire.
You're confident that that defined time has expired?
Yes.
In addition to any requirements the Building Department has, when code compliance issues a cultivation site inspection correction list, they usually, as is in the case in this one, request that reasonable efforts be made to make those corrections within a 10 day period.
And that, you read into that in anticipation and then you give us a call and we'll come back and see if you've done it?
Well, I think in this particular case or in any case like it where there's outstanding permits, code compliance officer is generally satisfied if reasonable good faith efforts are being undertaken by the applicant to get these permits issued. And so if within that 10 day period, the code compliance officer had been satisfied that efforts were being undertaken and diligence was being shown, it's not likely that a recommendation for denial would have been issued.
So are we claiming he graded without a permit back in 2016 or what about the details of that? We're talking about violations of law, but I don't see the usual claims that he graded before the initial application, things like that.
I'm not certain when the grading occurred. Only if you refer to the attachment with the photos from code compliance, the photo going along the hoop house, it's clear that grading had occurred and there was no permit on file.
We normally see the satellite shots and the drone shots or whatever they are in the various stages of.
The reason, in those cases typically the reason for denial was that grading occurred after the May 10th deadline. That was not the reason for denial. The reason for denial on this one was the failure to follow up on the permits.
The code compliance officer handling this case is currently on her way over here, she'll be here in a minute or so.
But just to respond, you still look a little perplexed. When we've denied a registration application because of grading after May 10th, we'll typically show the aerial images that show the, you know, before and after to document why that was the basis for denial. That was not the basis for denial on this one. The basis for denial was that he'd been given correction notice, correction notices on a number of issues and failed to follow up on that.
In his appeal letter, he says the building plans or plans in the Building Department disappeared or something for that effect. He says, "I'm afraid my plans have been erroneously misplaced within the Building Department." Do we know what that's all about?
My understanding is that the plans are in the drawer with the many other plans that need various corrections or follow-up inspections. They didn't dig them out for me, but for me, they were there.
That's the grading plans?
Uh, building grading plans are for Public Works, so.
Yeah, but I mean, did that also include plans for the, for the other permits?
Yeah, for the electrical and ground mounted solar.
Okay, so would you guys, did you want to hear from code compliance or do you want to hear from? Yes? You're up.
I'm up.
Okay, you're coming in blind?
Yes, I don't know what you talked about from the time I walked from here today.
So we are looking for clarification on the letter that was submitted for the corrections stating that they, he had violations to correct. He went and got his permits, but then they expired and he didn't complete the corrections. Is that what you have on file as well?
Um, if, I'm kind of going off of memory on this, but I remember that he got his correction list and then was asked to at least provide proof that he did or he was working towards making these corrections. I believe I got engineers' letters thing that they were going to start working on it. But it was never completed, it was never followed through. And I think that's the status that they're in now, so he was given corrections and made some effort, but then it stopped.
Were there any email communications between you and the appellant?
I do not remember at this time coming in, I was working on other cases, so I do not remember. But that's probably how I would have gotten the email letters from the engineers showing that, so. Those corrections would have had to have been made afterwards, everything was already done when I got there. So it would have been up to the building inspector to say, yes, they did it or no, they didn't.
And then the building inspector would contact you and let you know that he didn't follow through with that? How did that work?
Not necessarily.
Okay.
It would just be follow-up later whether this case was revisited or planning was asking what the status was of it at that point. So the building inspector not necessarily, wouldn't have contacted me and said yes or no, but he would have let them know what they needed to do. And that would just allow them to continue working on it.
Now, the letter from code compliance of 212, 2018, signed by Reba Davis, says the responsibility to call and request these inspections, excuse me. Before that, it says, "As of now, the Building Department has not received a request for additional inspection to verify these corrections have been made and they have expired the permit responsibilities to call and request these inspections falls on the property owner." So we're talking about your group being in touch with the plant, with the Building Department and knowing that the applicant did not request inspections from the Building Department. It isn't that you're saying that he needed to require or ask for further inspections from code compliance? You could operate off of what?
Right, because I'm not the one that's saying, yes, it is up to code, that is the building inspector. So he would be the final say of, yes, it is good or no, you need further corrections because of ABC.
And you, your group would receive word from the Building Department in a situation like this if the permits had been fully accomplished? Is that correct?
Not, we don't get notified when a permit is fully done. However, the property owner or applicant, whoever's in charge, should notify us because that's what we tell them to do when it is finished, so that we can check it off and say, yes, you did do it.
Okay, then you wouldn't necessarily then go out again to the property?
Not necessarily, if a building, if it was a building code violation that the building inspector signed off and said was okay, then we would go off of that. If it was a code fixing, say per se, the ordinance, we would. Or make other conditions for that, but in a building code, not necessarily.
Yeah, thank you.
So I'm a little confused. It's not unusual, but you had a letter that Commissioner Lattish just mentioned, the February 12th, 2018 letter to the Planning Department from code compliance about the one, two, third paragraph. "As of February 12th, 2018, per the Public Works Department, they received revised plans for the grading completed February 7th of 18. They are still active in the permitting process." And then we see another letter, March 13th of 18 from Public Works Inspector Joshua. Wow. Sent to Jeff Moreland, Cal State Engineering, talking about the check grants and it appears to be an ongoing process for the, for the grading permit. But your recommendation for denial was dated back in February, even though they had just received plans February 7th, a week before the date of your letter. Do you have those items in front of you by any chance?
I just got the letter from Ben here with the, from the.
I just got the letter from Ben here with the, from the Cal State Engineering with that date for public works, or to Cal State from public works. One second, if I could read back through this, since I'm going off of memory, I want to make sure I read it right. That's, so I wouldn't have known about this letter, because it was sent after my dated recommendation for denial, so that would have been something public works sent out separate. We don't always get notified when public works sends anything out. We call over if we have questions regarding the status of anything, but I would have called as of that date. They said that they had received the revised plans for grading completed on the property, and the date that they had received them, and they're still active in the permitting process through public works.
I'm sorry, can I ask what your name is, please?
Reba Davis, I'm sorry.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure.
Yes.
Okay.
So my question for the planning department then is that you're recommending denial in part on the inaction of, on the grading permit since March of two thousand and eighteen?
Correct.
That they were active at least until then, and then they were asked questions, and as far as you know, then it fell off the edge of the earth.
That's correct.
Okay.
I've got a couple of questions. The February twelfth memo from you says, "As of two twelve twenty eighteen, per the public works department, they received revised plans for the grading completed on the property on two seven twenty eighteen." When were the original plans for the grading submitted?
I do not know that. I don't have that in front of me here.
Okay, do you have a copy of the correction notice issued by the billing inspector?
I do not on hand. I didn't get to go pull the building file to go pull that.
Do you know whether those correction notices advise the applicant that it's the applicant's responsibility to request an additional inspection?
I do not know what a building inspector says out there. That, I believe, would be their practice, that, okay, I didn't sign off on these today, you have corrections, so you need to call for another inspection once these have been made, so we can come out and double check, just as they would with code. But I do not know what they say out there exactly.
What do you, do you know how it is that the person seeking to comply with the inspection, correction notice, is supposed to know that they have, it's their responsibility to call for rein inspection?
An inspector would say, once you've completed these corrections, you would need to call for a rein inspection for us to come back out and check them. I don't know exactly what the verbiage would say, because I'm not a building inspector, so I can't say exactly what, but that's what I would do, that's what code would do, and I would believe that's what they would do, is say, they don't have, they just have the correction notices that they've been issuing for a long time, and I don't know what the verbiage is on those, if it says anything else. Like, we have different things, but in order, they would say that you'd have to call for me to come back out when these are done, because it has to be inspected by them once it's corrected. Sorry, I hope that it makes kind of sense, I mean, trying to-
If I could interject, it looks like there was a grading permit applied for on four twenty twenty seventeen, the deposit made on eight twenty three twenty seventeen.
Eight twenty three?
Yeah.
Okay. Ms. Davis, is it possible that we could have you stay here for a few minutes while we have the appellant come up and we hear from him?
Mm-hmm, yes.
That would be great, thank you, just in case we want to question you afterward. Would you like to come up, please? State your name for the record or sign, thank you.
Thank you for your time. My name is Jacob Farrar. I have a couple of handouts I'd like to give you.
Okay, can you hand them to Annette, please, and she'll pass them down to us?
The handout is a timeline and some substantiation of my communications with the engineering firms and also planning department and building department. Couple of questions came up while I was listening, and so part of the issues here were that the permits that I obtained required engineering assistance in order to submit the plans and get them approved. And currently, I, this morning, I went to building department and received the approved solar permit. They said that they finally processed it and they would have it ready for me. So the permits lapsed while in the hands of the building department, that's one of my issues. If I had known that I had to re-up on my permits, reissue, I would have. The issue of being compliant is important to me. Some say that this exercise is not necessary, but because of the ban on commercial cannabis, but I feel that it's very important to me to complete this process and get all my permitting done, and to maintain good standing in this process. So I'd like to be, this to be overturned, to be put back to pending status, so I can complete this, or whatever you need to do. But there's, I have Jeff Moreland here to, for support, and I have an email correspondence from Terry Weatherby regarding my solar permits. The correction notice I have from the visit of the, from the building inspector, it was quite substantial for the solar container, about a dozen corrections. Two of them required, required Weatherby, Reynolds, Fritzen to get involved to help me with the engineering portion of it, and that's now finally been approved after multiple corrections sent by either Randy or Ed Short. And after these corrections were issued to me by, by the building inspector, I called a meeting with Will and Ed Short from building department to get some clarification and some guidance on how to make some of these corrections, either on my own or with the help of engineers. And it's, I just want to emphasize that it's important to me to complete this process and stay in good standing. Thank you.
So there's, we're hearing that your permits were expired, but then you stand before us today and say you went and got your solar permit today, approved?
The solar permit has, is in building department and was, they told me today. Dana told me that it's been approved, it just needs to be processed.
Okay, so when they say your permits expired, what permits were they referencing? Are you aware that the permits were expired?
Um, no, I'm not aware.
Is Mr. Moreland here speaking as a consultant for you?
Yes.
Can you come on up, please?
The other issue that, no, may I address?
We'll still give you time, too.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, your other issue was what? I'd like to hear that, please.
In the package that you received from planning and code, there was the letter from Reba on February twelfth. I never received that letter. I didn't know that I was pending denial. I was still in the process of obtaining these permits and working with the engineer consultants.
When was the last time you went into the building department?
It's frequent.
It was frequent and they never told you you were expired?
No.
What were you going into the building department for?
To try to obtain my solar permit.
Okay. Mr. Moreland, do you know if that permit was expired? Did you do any of the work on the solar?
Jeff Moreland, Cal State Engineering. We did numerous things, but we didn't do anything with the solar.
Okay, what did you work on specifically?
Worked on the as-built grading plan. We also got a permit for septic system, and tangential to that, we also did some work on the encroachment change because of the War Guard Bridge. So there were three things that I worked on.
Okay, and then he states that his plans were lost in the building department or misplaced? Are you aware of that?
I'm not aware of that. I dealt with public works for the grading issues.
Okay, so he's talking building department solar, strictly?
Correct.
Okay, I think, that's what I'm trying to do, is figure out which direction we're going in here, we've got too many things. Okay, so how are we on the grading and where are we at with that?
Okay, I heard some dates floating around, and those are accurate. We originally were hired back in like mid-two thousand and seventeen. We submitted a as-built grading plan for the cannabis portion of the development on eight twenty three seventeen, which was mentioned here earlier. We submitted the most recent revision on two five eighteen, and that date was mentioned. And then the whole thing, I was working with Joshua at Public Works, nice guy, and basically we were pretty close on the second revision, but they found, they're content that there was grading done elsewhere that wasn't really related to cannabis, a driveway that was improved, and so we've been kind of in stasis on that. We're not sure what to do with that.
So that was found after the fact, not at the initial?
It was found after the fact, Google Earth. They reviewed it later on.
So it wasn't a part of the original correction notice?
Correct.
Okay. So now that's a whole separate issue that we aren't even here about today, correct?
Well, in reality, we could take care of it as far as an as-built grading plan, but we held off because of the uncertainty of the situation.
Okay, and that was an original grading? It wasn't something that he did after the correction notice?
It was original grading.
Good, okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, so where are we at now? Are we going to get our grading permit from public works? Is it delinquent? Where are we at?
We can, we're on hold right now.
Now, are you on, oh, excuse me?
No, go ahead.
We have this March thirteenth, two thousand and eighteen, letter-
Yes.
-from public works to your business, and as I understand it, that had attached to it the plans with red marks on it-
Typical revision.
What about, what about all this? So, but that's in limbo now?
I believe that brought up the issue of the driveway. Working with Jake, we decided, let's hold off and see where this fleshes out, basically, so.
I don't-
I haven't done any work on that since the last submittal was two five eighteen.
Yeah.
And then there was a revision letter in March.
So I'm unclear as to-
Me, too.
Apparently, some action is needed somewhere, and what's, I mean, nothing's going on. So I need to know who's waiting for whom.
Currently in stasis right now.
I mean, if you're waiting for the outcome of this hearing, unfortunately, we're looking for what actions are being taken to reach these permits, and-
I guess with that question, what could be done, if I'm authorized by the client, I could make the revisions and turn them back in to Josh or Krenelak, I think is his name.
When do you have to do that anyway? No matter what? Whether we're operating under a ban or not, you still have to complete that grading, correct?
Yes.
Because you'll still have a violation existing no matter what? Okay, so-
Driveway was a new issue. It was an existing driveway that-
When did they find that?
Based, I believe, going by memory, I think it was after, it was in March of this year.
Okay.
Yes, it was a new thing.
Do we have a notice on that? Or was it just in office discussion?
I talked to him by phone. I talked to Joshua about it. I think he gave me a phone call.
Okay, okay, well, that's not a part of today's hearing, so I don't even want to know about that right now.
The only reason it's part of it is that it seems to have stalled-
Is that's what stalled everything?
I don't know what's stalling, but we just haven't done that last step.
What do you think is stalling it?
I think the grading permit is ready. The driveway isn't something in addition to this. It's not related to the cannabis. It's more of a code compliance issue.
Okay, so we had other, and the solar you're saying is approved. So why, okay, I guess, here's our confusion, or at least mine. We're being told your permits are expired, nothing's getting done, and you're standing before me telling me you have an approval, you have your consultant with you saying that the engineering is done on the grading and we're waiting on that. Where's the confusion? Why do we have a disconnect of correction notices and permits that are not, that are expired, but yet he's coming before saying something completely different? Has anybody called the building department and double checked all of this recently to see where we're really at, or the public works?
Well, the issue is really that code compliance didn't believe that he'd made reasonable diligent efforts to complete the correction list within the timeframe stated in the notice of correction. And I'd also just point out that all building permits that do expire, expire in the possession of the building department. When you request a permit, you request, you complete the project and request a rein inspection and have it filed. And if you don't do that, your permit expires. I mean, so it's not like the building department was sitting around on its hands, not taking care of the building permit. They have to, the project has to be finished and re-inspected and filed.
But it sounds here as if the applicant didn't do anything further, and yet now, I mean, except keep in touch with the building department, and now the permit is ready to be issued or has been issued. And so I question whether they, there's inaction by the applicant here. If everything was done and a permit is being issued, it sounds like the delay may well be with the building department rather than the applicant.
We've had several people before us talk about delays in grading permits, long delays. So would the building department, having so much on their desk, have caused such a delay to think, I don't understand where, I think we need to have code compliance come back up at some point.
Well, the, I think, I think the inquiry is really fairly narrow. It's whether or not code compliance was correct in determining that reasonable diligence wasn't being made during the period stated in the correction notice, and then whether planning correctly relied on that determination by the code enforcement officer. That's, that's really all we're doing, and I think Reba, in her notice of, notice of correction, says, please make these corrections within ten days. And had there been regular routine contact with Reba to assure her that efforts were being made, and if efforts were in fact being made, no recommendation for denial would have occurred.
Can I follow up on that thought? The February twelfth letter, February twelfth, two thousand and eighteen, from Reba to the planning department, this is the recommendation for denial. And it's talking about inspections and follow up hasn't happened, and yet she says, "As of February twelfth," the same date as the letter, "per the public works department, they received revised plans for the grading completed on the property," presumably meaning as-built plans, "on February seventh, five days before the date of this letter, they are still active in the permitting process." I'm just not following the logic of saying on February twelfth that they haven't followed And then I see this, I don't know if you've got what we were handed-
Yeah, we just had it on-
-long list of exact dates when the applicant contacted the various, many people here in the county, the building department, the whoever, and to claim that he hasn't followed up, doesn't seem to-
Okay, so it just, I have an email here before me that is, he was talking, it looks like it was from Terry Weatherby to Ed Short, and this email, we understand that his cargo container foundation project, rest of, has not yet been permitted. We had plan check comments from a first check from our department, and we submitted several months ago in response to those comments. We have yet to receive our permit and have been told today that the project is being sent out for third-party review. As this involves a minimal amount of rechecking, is this something that can be done in-house? It's a cargo container storage foundation, so a third-party check and several additional days and weeks of delay do not seem to make sense. I understand his pad footings have been ready to pour for a while, so our office would be happy to review the footing, so he can go ahead and pour. We understand his solar project has been finalized as well, so this is the last piece to be permitted on his property. This is his engineer, engineering and design, Terry Weatherby, in an email with the building It just appears that he kept trying.
Well, I also have a question as far as in the staff report, where it talks unpermitted grading, electrical work, and ground-mounted solar. Now, we haven't heard anything about a separate permit for electrical work. I don't, I mean, it may well be in his chronology, but it seems to me we're talking about grading or the solar, and of course, here, we just, what's just been read has to do with a foundation for a container, and, but I haven't seen anything about electrical. Just what, which, what issues are you proceeding with?
With the ground-mounted solar, the grading, and I suppose I wasn't specific enough, it's the electrical trenching from the solar to that.
But that, would that be included in the ground-mounted solar permit?
No, it was a separate permit.
Do we know anything about that permit?
Yeah. As of 6/25/18, it was expired.
So I'm gonna...
On June 18th is the email talking about solar being approved.
But that, apparently, is a separate thing from the trenching. Can you fill us in about the trenching permit?
When I got my corrective notices, the inspector, Todd Schaefer, indicated that the electrical trenching on the next inspection would be signed off. It was, I needed to expose the trench. And that has since been done, just waiting on the, the other pieces of this corrective notice, which required my, my engagement with Terry Weatherby's firm to get structural plans for the cargo container and also for the solar mounts. He signed off and stamped on my solar mounts as well. So those were two that required an engineer's help.
But the trenches are exposed, waiting for inspection?
Right.
And you've called them and say, here we are, ready for inspection?
I've been told by building that you might as well wait for your solar container permit to do it all at once.
Can, can you pass that correction notice over to Annette so that we can take a look at it and see the date on it, please?
I just wondered if I'm missing something here? Because the letter from the inspection says that 10 days to provide proof of correction beginning 5/18/17. Then when you look at when he started doing stuff, that was quite a long time afterwards. It's not within the 10 days he had to, there was, I don't, either I'm missing something or I don't see anything within those 10 days where he is trying to do something, he showed proof that he's trying to do something. That's what I want to know, where I'm missing something at.
My proof was my engagement with the engineers. And we had sent a engagement letter stating our relationship and their plan on getting me those grading permits and then after that with the solar project as well.
Did you submit that to Code Compliance?
Yeah, Reba did receive that as part of my due diligence follow-up.
That was on the grading. What about the solar?
Same.
Same thing? Okay.
I'm confused about this trenching and the solar and the foundations for the container.
Sure.
Are we talking about the same, foundations for the container, also the solar?
It is.
Okay.
That's why it was a little complex for building department. It was, it could have been a new situation.
Yeah.
And I suspect that's why there were so many corrections that needed to be made.
But your understanding now is that you're getting your solar permit?
Yes.
And it's ready to be picked up? And that then the trenching will be, they'll come out and take a look at that and see if they can sign off on that also?
Yes.
And that they haven't said, oh, no, this permit is expired, we can't do that?
No. But in compiling my data, I, you know, I recognize that those have lapsed.
They've lapsed, but the, but the building department continued to take action on it?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay.
I've got a question about the, the grading. The timeline you handed us says on 3/20/17, you met with Mark Davis, Calveras Public Works, regarding the Rarewood Flat Bridge project, and the county would use your land for staging and parking of county contractor vehicles. And then 4/21/17, you contracted with Cal State Engineering to obtain a grading permit. Does that grading permit, is that connected with the Rarewood Flat Bridge project?
No, I just wanted to...
Two separate things?
I would just want to establish that I was working with the county in a cordial way to allow them to use my land.
Okay, those are two different items.
Two different, yes.
So I'm, I'm going to get back to the, to the grading. Because it seems to me we're just at a, at a total standstill here. I mean, that, that the project is at a total standstill. And I don't know why, why, what are you waiting for? I mean, I'm directing this to the engineer. What are you waiting for in order to make further progress on the grading?
Well, if memory serves, I'm not saying I've got the best memory, but we went through the one revision that we responded to, to Joshua. And it was mainly, it's typical, we do a lot of these. And it's typically easy stuff, you know, showing ties to property corners and stuff that he wants. So we did that and submitted that on 2/5/18. And after that, either in writing, I'm sure it was in writing, but certainly on the phone, I talked to, could we talk to Joshua? What do we need here? And he brought up the fact, or his contention, that he summarily looked at Google Earth and saw there was some driveway work that appeared after 2007. There was no permitting. So he kind of lumped that in with the thing. One, I think one correspondence, certainly one phone call that attested to that. So that's a big deal. It's a big change of scope. And we talked about it. And I don't know if, you know, Joshua's not here, wish he was, but we talked with the client and we said, where's this going? It's this driveway thing. So we held off on that for the time being. We're still actively pursuing a permit, but we held off on submitting something until we figure out where we're going with this. That's what's going on.
Okay. What's going on is not much. While the two of you decide what should go on and how you should deal with the county. Is that, is that a fair...
I think that's accurate, yeah.
So I'm looking through the notes. Maybe you can help me out here. The only correspondence that I see that you took with Reba was six months after she gave you the corrective notice. Did you have any other contact with her besides that one? You document on 9/14, you contacted Reba. That's the only documentation I see of you letting her know what's going on in that set, time period.
Within a few days of the 10-day period, I contacted Reba as well to, to give her assurances that I'm moving forward with the corrective measures.
Okay.
That is missing from the timeline.
Did you give her notices of permits or notices that you've been to the building department or the grading department, or that you had an engagement letter? Did you give Reba anything to keep her knowing that you were...
Yes.
And you have communications with her showing that you kept her advised the whole way?
Yeah, I mean, there were some lapses while the, it was in the county's hands. And I was waiting to reply to the county or to pick up my approved permit. So there were some gaps when, when it was in the county's court. But when it was my responsibility, I felt that I followed up with her diligently.
Okay, so did you know anything before the June 6th? Did you get any notification that a denial letter was going out? A recommendation to the planning department from Code Compliance? Did you have any knowledge of that?
I talked with Diana from Code Compliance and...
Diana was a member of the planning staff, not Code Compliance.
Okay, planning staff, Diana. And she was, she asked for a status update. And I, I corresponded with her and gave her the engagement that I had with Terry Weatherby. And she responded back to me, you know, I'll let you know if I have any questions.
Okay. But Code Compliance didn't get notified, just the planning department?
Yeah, there's a lot of the inner department stuff I wasn't a part of.
Okay. I'm sorry, Commissioner.
What was the date on that contact with Diana? Approximate date, if you have an exact...
February 21st.
Of 18?
Yeah.
Madam Sharon?
Yes.
It seems though there's a lot of maybe missing information here.
Agreed.
And maybe would be appropriate to either, you know, continue this to the end of the meeting and we have a chance to sort of go through the full permit files. But I guess I would, you know, more recommend that we continue to the next meeting, give us a chance to review the building department records more thoroughly, new information that's just been provided here now from the appellant. And see, I mean, it may be that we erred in the decision, you know, we didn't have complete information from the memo that we got from Code Compliance. Or it may be that there's, you know, other information. Commissioner Booster had requested certain information that obviously would have helped in making the decision. We don't really have that. I don't want to sort of rush through...
I agree.
Trying to look at, you know, files of permits. So it may be appropriate if the appellant is willing to continue this for a couple of weeks so that we can look at the file more carefully and then, and then, you know, provide that documentation for you if we feel that, you know, our denial was still valid at this point.
Okay.
In that process, if, if we do this, if you could be very clear as to what permits covered what? Because...
I think what we'd like to do is sort of create a timeline for each individual permit. So like we have three different permits in building plus the grading permit. It sounds like they're getting sort of intermingled here to some degree. And maybe if the, if the permit expired, maybe the permits that are being issued today are new permits entirely. I don't know all the, all the details. So it'd be difficult to make a decision.
Would you be in agreement to letting us do further investigation within the county and bring in your hearing back for a decision?
Absolutely.
Okay.
In the meantime, would I be able to complete the permit that I've been issued today?
You need to complete everything. Just keep on going. Never stop.
Right.
Okay.
I don't know about Mr. Mar, but I would suggest that you at least contact planning staff and supplement your list, your chronology with any emails, telephone contacts, dates, who you talk to, things like that, that may not be on this list.
Yeah, if you've got emails or your consultants have emails, I would suggest printing them off and giving them to Peter as well so that they have that in the file to work with.
Okay.
And clarify what's going on with a grading permit that seems to be kind of reached no pulse.
Right. A lot of it, you know, some of this stuff was out of my hands.
Yeah, I know. But just, if you make that as clear as possible.
Okay, so I would be looking for a motion to continue this hearing if you all are willing to do that to date certain.
Should we have public comment on that?
We should have public comment. Most likely we should. Thank you. Okay, can we have you sit down for just a moment? We'd like to go to the what?
May I have my corrective...
I'd like your copy of the first of your line.
Sure.
We'll, we'll get it back to you. We did need to have it for, for the record.
Thank you. Okay, is there anybody in the public that would like to comment on this particular case?
Well, on the continuance.
On the continuance.
So we could open public comment on the hearing?
Right.
When we bring it back for continuance?
Right. Because we, this would be on the hearing itself.
My suggestion would be to take public comment on the continuance. Because if it's continued, you won't, you can get comments on it.
I don't have a motion for a continuance. So...
Maybe the, technically, somebody could move and then you take public comment before you vote on the continuance.
I need to have a motion to be able to take public comment on it.
Move me continue this to the next available date.
Okay. Is that all in favor?
Well, no, no.
Just see what people think.
We have a motion, a second, and then, and so...
I'm getting lost, sorry.
Mr. Sisk, did you second that motion?
Okay. We have a second and we're gonna hold.
So a motion, then a second on the floor, now open up comment on the continuance. With the understanding that when you bring it back, you would open a public comment on the hearing itself at that follow, at the next meeting.
Okay, so now we're having public comment on the continuance only. And nobody has anything to say. So I'm going to close public comment. I'm going to bring it back. And now we are going to vote on the continuance.
Yes.
Okay.
I think we should thank the public for coming and waiting around to do the public comment and hope you can come back later.
Okay. So we have a motion, we have a second. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries. We are going to continue this to what date certain? I need a date for him.
Well, the next meeting's the 26th.
Okay, so... Did you get that?
Yeah.
It's August 26th.
Mr. Farr?
July.
July 26th will be the date of the next hearing? Okay. Are you available on that date?
Sure.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Moving on to the next one, I don't even know where my agenda went and all that.
Out of five.
We're going to go to number five, which is the Appeal 2016-468 by Jeremy Maddox. And Ben, you're handling that one?
Yes, I am.
Thank you.
All right. This is Appeal 2016-468 by Jeremy Maddox. On behalf of North of Nimbus, this application was submitted on June 27, 2016, for 22,000 square feet of mixed light cultivation. Pursuant to 1795-165F of the urgency ordinance, any and all existing or outstanding code violations on the property must be remedied prior to a permit being issued. Therefore, the planning director determined that a site inspection was a necessary part of the application review process. On May 17th, Code Compliance Officer Thomas Watts contacted the appellant to schedule a site inspection and offered several dates to the appellant, which he refused. As a result, Officer Watts chose the date of May 30th, 2018 as the inspection date. On the day of the inspection, Officer Davis called the appellant to let them know that they were leaving the office to go to the site, to meet them there, to which the appellant said they were not available. The Code Compliance Officer then offered him additional dates, and he said he would not be available until after June 11th, 2018, which was after the end of the 90-day grace period for the ending of the urgency ordinance. So no more inspections would be done after that date. As a result of the appellant's refusal or reluctance to schedule a inspection, Code Compliance recommended the application for denial. Additionally, pursuant to 1795-210, the applicant did sign consent to reasonable inspections of the site. And pursuant to 1795-165A2E, their failure to cooperate with the enforcement officials in their efforts to make sure the site was in compliance amounts to a failure to comply with the requirements of the urgency ordinance and therefore was denied pursuant to 1795-170A1.
Okay.
And I'd also like to have the Code Compliance Officer that handled this case come up and say a few words, if you don't mind.
Okay.
I'm Reba Davis with Code Compliance. The part of this case that I handled was setting, attempting to go out and do the inspection on the 30th. Let me make sure that I have my dates here. So exactly what Ben had said is what had happened. I contacted him on the 30th to confirm that they were going to be there so that I could have access to it because of how the property is set up. It's not easily accessible. So I called to make sure that the gate was going to be open, I can get in. They said they were not going to be there, and that they were not available for the inspection. I gave them additional dates for the inspection and basically said that he was not going to be available for any of those until after the June 11th date. So that was after the end of the grace period, and we were not doing any inspections on that. I know that Thomas Watts had given him multiple dates to try to make something available. These inspections don't take that long. And we usually try to do what we can to appease their schedules and work with them on that. And he didn't provide any type of help on that. So that's why Tom went ahead and set the date, said this is the date we are available. Let us know if we need any, if you have any other issues. I didn't hear anything from Mr. Maddox until the date when I called him. And I don't have any record of Tom hearing anything as well from him saying, I'm not going to be there that date. So we just stuck to the date that was given at the time of the first phone call. I'm not sure what else I have.
Ms. Davis, in reviewing the records of the case file, was there, was there any ever time when Code Compliance went onto the property at all?
It appears that Code Compliance went out to the property on July 11th. I'm sorry, not July 11th. Yeah, July 11th, 2017. not July 11. Yeah, July 11, 2017, or 16, when there was a fire out there, an electrical fire, code compliance, or code compliance officer Courtney went out there for that and then subsequently issued a notice of violation on July 21, 2016. And, but there was no additional action on code compliance for that because of the cannabis cultivation, and there was only one code officer doing general code at that time, so he was unable to go out and do anything else after that. And we were not able to go out and do any additional inspections due to not being allowed under the property.
What was the violation for on July 21st?
It was, let me see here. In summary, it says several structures on the property were built and electrical installed without the benefits of permits. The property cultivation site must be secured against access, against trespassers. So it looked like the electrical that had not been permitted at that time and a hoop house that wasn't permitted as well. It looks like they did come in after the notice was issued and received a forty, or 400 amp and 200 amp sub panels. They were as built, so work had been done before and then requested a permit after they had been told to or had been requested by code compliance. So there wasn't any permits obtained for work being done on the property before being told by code compliance. It seems like that kind of happened a couple of times on this property, work being done, and then only after they were contacted by code compliance did they get permits.
Were those permits final?
That permit was, yes. In the system, it says final.
So, and what was the purpose of, of Mr. Watts asking for a further inspection? Was just a follow-up?
No, it was for the initial cultivation inspection. It wasn't based off of Courtney's initial. However, that would have been taken into consideration to make sure that those issues were remedied as well, but it would have been for the initial cannabis inspection for the cultivation site and the property.
So you indicated that there were multiple times that there were violations. If they only went once, why do we know?
There were multiple violations for the one time we went out there.
And all of those were corrected within a period of time that they asked them to be corrected?
I do not know because we were not able to go out there and verify. The only one I know is that the permit for the electrical was final by a building inspector. That's the only one I know of. I wasn't able to go out there to verify if the hoop houses were up there or not and whether they had been permitted. I know that...
That was in 2016, and we're now looking at July of 2018?
Yes. However, I do have...
Two years.
I have an aerial, and I have a recent complaint for the property showing that there are hoop houses up there. I know that they also did apply for a grading permit. It's still in the deposit status. I contacted the public works department just to get the updated status of that today. And it said that there was a revision sent back in, or sent back in October, or they had returned to the public works department what they had requested. Then it was sent back with the revision in October to the engineer. And then there was a second revision sent back to the engineer on January 23 of this year, 2018, and have not received any response from the engineer as of today's date in regards to the correction notice for the grading permit for the property. I did ask the public works department which areas they were, if this was for as-built or what are your plans to be doing on the property. And they said that it was for as-built and that it related to three different cultivation areas and a storage area with a shed or some type of building. So all of that had already been done, and it's as-built again, completed without permits, and then permits were applied for after everything had already been done.
So basically, code compliance in May of this year wanted to go out and actually take a look and see what was on the ground?
Yes.
And they were unable to arrange a date with the applicant to get out there?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Anything further? Any further questions? Or do you want to hear from the appellant? I'm sorry?
I have six seconds.
Okay. All right, can the appellant come up, please?
I have some information to pass out to you guys.
Can you give it to Annette, please, and she'll pass it down to us?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
I, I'm not objecting to this, but I'd just point out that documents were supposed to be submitted well before the meeting pursuant to the planning commission's rule of procedure.
And we've allowed every single appellant to submit to subject to one would be...
You're right, it's, but it's just...
Somebody here is going to have to share, I don't know who to share.
And how are we supposed to digest all this during the hearing?
This you can briefly read through, and as you can see, all these documents, including the bedsheets from giving the permit for grading and the other permits that we've had. It's mostly redoing stuff that was, was built and as-built previously when we bought the property, right after the Butte fired. Secondly, we were not available in the last, you know, 700-plus days, doing all we can. You can see through the documentation as you flip through it that we've done everything that we were supposed to do in a timely fashion. Anytime we were asked something from the county or code compliance or for the cannabis cultivation, we've accomplished it. We're not trying to hide anything. We're, we're on the front page of the newspaper constantly. We're, we're not hiding. So we're a family that is extremely busy around the end of May, and we were really not available. I have a statement here to read through. I'm asking the application number 2016-468, we return to the status quo ante of pending status. The county changed the status from pending to denial after expiration of the urgency ordinance. Pursuant to California Government Code, I formally object because there is no legal authority for any action to be taken by the county upon this application after the urgency ordinance expired by operation of law. The urgency ordinance was adopted pursuant to Government Code Section 65858 on May 10, 2016, and it expired on February 14, 2018. After submitting my timely application in '16, it was nearly two years later after expiration of the urgency ordinance on May 17 that I was first contacted by the county and asked to arrange for a site inspection. Due to my busy schedule, I needed three weeks of time to wrap up other scheduled matters, graduations, orientations, and custody battles, make myself available for site inspection. I therefore requested that it be done on or after June 6, or the evening of June 6, or any day thereafter. That was nine days after she called me. I also clearly stated to Thomas Watts on the phone that May 30 would not work, and I'd have to check the schedule of our four children with my wife. County staff refused to inspect my property and falsely contends that I did not agree to an inspection. There is no valid reason why the county could not provide three weeks' time to arrange the inspection or conduct their inspection without me present. This was done in numerous cases, including another property of mine in Mountain Ranch. This other property was inspected without prior notice, and I was called by Thomas Watts previously last year while he was onsite at the gate, and my caretaker let him in cordially. The only reason provided to me was the county's mistaken belief that the urgency ordinance expired June 7, and that therefore all inspections needed to be completed by such date. The urgency ordinance did not expire June 7. This is a false statement by, of the law by the county because an urgency ordinance can only be operative and valid for a maximum of two years, in this case from May 10, 2016. However, the county board of supervisors did not take action to extend the urgency ordinance to maximize the two years, and therefore the urgency ordinance had expired February 14, 2018. Since the urgency ordinance expired three months before the county even called me to ask for the inspection, my application should not have been changed from pending status. County staff had no authority under the urgency ordinance to take any action whatsoever because it had expired. Since the county wanted to inspect the property, after expiration of the urgency ordinance, I was willing to comply with the request and gave them less than a nine-day window on the May 30 phone call by offering the evening of June 6 or any time June 7 through the 15. However, the county's failure to timely request to inspect my property, waiting more than two years after passage of the urgency ordinance, does not affect the status of my application when the urgency ordinance expired. I respectfully request that my application's status be returned to the status quo ante of pending for application 2016-468 and that the denial be reversed. The main issue with graduations and kids and life is that we were not, we were honestly not available. I mean, we paid a lot of money to get things in a timely manner to get to where we are, and now perhaps we can revisit all these documents again in a year or two, but a denial for, for having a family is, is, is no, is not acceptable. To try and make all of this work and to have a chance in the future is what I need for this.
Now, if you previously had a caretaker at the gate to let in code compliance, why couldn't you say, "I, I'm busy with graduations and everything else, but I'll have a caretaker at the gate. Come on..."
We don't have a caretaker. All right, we've been disassembling this business since February, so we're basically on vacation in May.
So you had nobody, nobody, nobody that could let code compliance in?
There was nobody there, no.
It seems to me you're going, in one, in one breath, you're saying, "Oh, this ordinance doesn't exist anymore, and therefore you can't take this action." And on the other breath, you're saying, "Oh, they could have come out after June 7 because they could still operate under the ordinance." I'm, I'm a little confused as to your argument.
The question, maybe the question could clarify if, does the right of entry with the urgency ordinance allow them to come into my property at any time in the month of May or June this year? Can you answer, anyone answer that question?
I'd, I'd be relying on staff and legal opinion of counsel.
I, I, I would, I would just advise planning commission that we don't have to provide legal answers or advice. I would just recommend the planning commission take the evidence it needs.
The, the main issue of, of all of it is not being available. And honestly, wanting to be available and pointing out that there, no, there is no caretaker.
What was, when you offered June 6, because code compliance is saying that you would not let them in until June 11?
That is an incorrect statement. June 6, the evening, I offered to be home after 6 o'clock.
And then the 7th, 8th, 9th?
And any day thereafter. And before that, I, it's not fair to the family to, or other obligations to, to avoid one. And in that same week, our 17-year-old graduated. I picked her up from San Francisco Airport. She dances ballet professionally in New York. Our eighth grader graduated as well that week. The many vacations we had, I was not going to sacrifice as much of, as I've already sacrificed in the last several years of working, you know, tireless, tirelessly on all of this.
What was the response to July 6, 7, and 8? What were you told?
It was a short, abrupt...
Or June, I'm sorry.
It was a very short, abrupt, "Okay, think we'll just have this as you didn't, didn't allow us in." And it was a quite abrupt hangup of the phone.
Okay.
Because we were honestly not available.
When you talked to Thomas Watts previous to that, did you give him a specific day at that time? What, what happened with that one?
I also, I was shocked that he was calling after so much time because I haven't had him on my phone since he was, you know, a year plus ago at the other property. But I asked him, "What are you coming to inspect? Isn't this all over with? Aren't we disassembling?" And I said, "I know that I'm going to be free on the 6th and the 7th as well." But he wanted something sooner because he didn't want to do any inspections after the 7th, is what he stated. And I said, "Well, why? Then if you can't inspect on the 7th, why can't you inspect?"
What were you disassembling at that time?
Just the entire farm, you know, pulling everything apart, getting into compliance.
So if he had come at that time, what would he have seen?
Plants getting thrown out. You know, there was just disassembling of old greenhouses that were from, you know, two and a half years ago.
If you were there disassembling it, wouldn't you be there to let him in?
When he called, and I'm doing that at that time, yes. But he wasn't coming that day. He wasn't coming that week. He was scheduling for the 30th. And that end of the month, that the 30th, we were not available. The dates that they gave, we were not available.
Weren't there some dates between the time of his call and May 30 that he gave him?
There was nothing available where we could be available to meet, and it's very important that I was to meet with him.
Where is this property located?
At the end of Shetland Court, next to Bear Mountain, Bonkhil.
Is that the Bar 20 subdivision?
Yeah, at the end of Bar 20.
There's a statement in the file in an affidavit declaration by Reba Davis that says that "Due to, due to the terrain of the parcel," and it goes on, "That they needed to schedule an inspection with you in order to gain access." Could you comment on that?
The, the property was set up identical to the one in Mountain Ranch. You know, perhaps they didn't want to push open a gate or, or climb a gate.
Well, the property we're talking about here now, is it, is it on steep terrain or is it fairly level, or what is it?
It's walkable. We have horses that roam the entire property, and the entire 20 acres is, is fenced.
And you have a, a gate there that people can just open, or is it locked?
There's a fire, what, a fire, you know, fire code key box, and there's a key box that they could enter in.
So if somebody doesn't have the code, they can't get in the gate?
Right.
Okay, if they can't get in the gate, then what do they do? Crawl through the barbed wire fence or what?
You could crawl over the fence. That's, that's...
And then how far do you have to walk to the cultivation site?
Oh, well, by the picture there, I mean, we walk to the bottom quite often, so it's not that far of a walk. We walked it last night to our tomatoes.
Did you offer to give Mr. Watts the code to get in the gate?
You know, on the phone while I was mending fences when he was calling me, I actually had a horse in the chicken coop. And as funny as it sounds, but that's what was happening. It wasn't, didn't sound like an option for Mr. Watts.
I take it the horse was not supposed to be in the chicken coop?
It was, you know, one-way chicken basket. Yeah, it was quite a scene.
So you had to cut it out?
I had to cut it out. So the conversation as far as, it didn't really happen at that time.
Okay, thank you.
Our, our report says the address, the mailing address is Angel's Camp. I assume this is outside the city limits.
This is, this is outside the city limits, yes.
Did you ever put in writing these explanations of the family problems, the graduations, the, you know, custody battle, whatever the reasons were to either Reba Davis or anybody in planning?
No, it, it's not really necessary to put your life's issues in front of everyone else's. I mean, that's usually why the people, most people can't show up to a regular job sometimes in, in work. So...
Yeah, you do.
Everyone has a life and has orthodontist appointments, braces coming off, graduations. It's been quite a busy mini-vacation with the, the 17-year-old flew back in that same time period, climbing Yosemite. There was quite a bit of stuff that we had going on. I was not going to sacrifice any time for this two-year fiasco that we have in the county to...
Aside from the fiasco situation, the physical description of this, of this parcel, what is it, a 20-acre piece?
20 acres.
I'm having trouble understanding why you couldn't have arranged for somebody to let them in. Was there some, did you have a home on that particular parcel?
We, we live in the home on this parcel.
On the 20 acres?
This is where we, we don't have any other employees working anymore. I don't have people, you know, hanging out or being paid to help me do what I do. I do most of what I do by myself. I usually have one or two other people on a parcel, and that's it. So there, we weren't...
The fenced cultivation site, though, is what needed to be inspected, right?
Right.
And that's all fenced in separately from the house?
It's all in the center of the property, and the entire property is fenced in.
So you can't get to your house without going through this gate?
You would get to our house through the gate.
But you didn't want to give them the code?
It wasn't a subject that came up.
You didn't want to give them the code, though?
That wasn't a subject that came up and that wasn't an option.
Why, why wasn't it an option?
Because neither party on the phone or myself thought of that option. It wasn't discussed.
Were you upset with the request? Is that what happened?
Upset with the request? No, it was kind of shocking after such a long period of time. And given the state that we're in. Perhaps in the future, things can be changed and turned around. For the moment, I find due diligence and at all fairness, we should have this just sitting where it was prior.
Did you have hoop houses on that property in May of this year?
There are.
They're still there today?
There are. Everything is just standing like in, in pieces from where it was when the announcement of the ban came out and things started just resting where they are. Engineering-
You said, you said earlier that you were pulling things down or pulling-
Yeah.
-plants out and all that. But the hoop houses stay?
They're just sitting where they, where they were. Everything is as it was a year ago.
And did you get the hoop houses permitted at some point?
The engineering and the plans just came in January and they've been sitting where they are as well with the greenhouses. So, everything is sitting in the exact same-
So, the hoop houses have not actually been permitted?
They were as built, they were there in the May of two thousand sixteen and nothing's changed since then, except for the engineering that just came in in January, which the plans are sitting right here.
Okay, so the permit on the hoop houses has not been issued?
It has not because they're being disassembled as of the ban at the same time of February. But the issue, regardless of where we need to come in compliance or where, as you can see, we do what we need to do when it's required of us. At this point in January and February, when everything is being disassembled and taken apart, there's no further necessary permits needed unless asked by code compliance or asked by an inspection. So, what we need here is to have a pending status and a moment where it, to go forward in the future.
Did you have any neighbors or friends that you could trust enough to let the code compliance into your property?
They were not home. She works in the Bay Area as an RN. She's written a letter. She has the two parcels in the front page of that binder and she's written a letter on the front page regarding our status as neighbors.
You talked about your children. I think you said you have four?
Yes, I do.
And they're here today?
All but the oldest.
And the oldest, it's how old?
Seventeen.
So, none of them are adults?
No.
What, is there a, a key document in here that we should, I mean, we don't have time to give full review?
It's basically two, two years of, you know, documents are in there, as most as I could drum up, to show that we've done almost everything.
You've done a lot.
We've, almost everything we can do.
Okay.
Okay, so, I guess I have questions for code compliance at this point. I don't know where you guys are at. Do you want to go back there?
I'd be fine.
Okay, all right. We'll give you a chance for a rebuttal. We're going to go back to staff and then-
Do you want to open public comment first?
Yeah, I do want to open public comment, yes. Thank you. Okay, is there anybody from the public that would like to speak?
Prepona Randall Smith. I think one line of questioning from Mr. Bocelli about the law. I think the correct question that, that Mr. Bocelli should have asked Mr. Maddox is, rather than telling him he didn't agree to do something when it didn't come up, I think the question is, had Mr. Watts showed up at the gate and called him, would you have given him the code? And I, based on past experience, I imagine, I think Jeremy probably would have said, "Yeah, sure, here's the code. Go and do your inspection like you did a year ago at the other site." But you didn't ask that question, but I think that's the question that should have been asked. And, you know, I think, I don't know how this is going to go, but I think it's pretty clear from the, from the government code that the urgency ordinance expired on February fourteenth. The documentation in, in this, in this rejection, it specifically cites the urgency ordinance and only the urgency ordinance. It refers to a ninety-day extension, which could not have possibly happened because under the county code, or under the state code, government code, an urgency ordinance can only be renewed two times. And that happened twice already. There couldn't be a third extension. It's not possible under the state law. So, the urgency ordinance expired on February fourteenth. Now, you guys can all disagree and everything and, you know, maybe someday a court will decide that issue, but I think that whether or not, you know, I think Mr. Maddox just being a good guy, he's saying, "Sure, even though maybe you're not, you're not, you shouldn't be coming in, I'm still willing to let you come in." You know, but then there's this thing about June seventh. What's so special about June seventh? And what's special about June seventh, according to the county, is that that's the expiration of the extension of the urgency ordinance. There was none. There couldn't be one. So, there, it's, it's a little, I think that, you know, really your best decision right now is to just leave him unpermitted, not reject it, just to keep him in stand, in pending status. That's the simple call. Let him be in pending status. It doesn't hurt anybody to, to reject him, might risk his opportunities to get a permit later if and when the pendulum swings back and we have regulations again. So, those, so those are my three points. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody else like to comment?
Good morning. I'm Terry McBride, Mountain Ranch. These are the type of people we want to grow marijuana in our county. These are folks that follow the rules and do everything they can and do everything right. And then they're hammered for life being a part of them. We all have children, many, I suppose some don't. And we know what happens when you have kids. And you may have plants. Right now, I have a dog sitting in the car with air conditioning on. My poor kid's sitting in there with him so I can get him to the vet because he got a foxtail last night. Welcome to life. So, I think you ought to let, work with this man. Let him stay in pending status. Let us, let these people that are trying to do the right thing, to help save the economy of this county that I'm seeing collapse, and, and support them and work with them as he is poster child of how to do it right. Thank you.
I'm sorry, there's one more thing I wanted to say, ma'am.
I can't let you come up. Have somebody, tell somebody else and let them say it for you.
Hello, Mark Bolger, Mountain Ranch. I didn't come prepared to comment on this case, but since I took day out of my schedule, I figured I might as well stick around and throw in my two cents. I can definitely attest to the character of the Maddoxes. They are exemplary community members. I have not been on their farm in quite some time, but he does an amazing job. He's not the best in the county, but he's pretty good. Anyway, what I'm concerned with here is we've had several different standards applied throughout the phase of the urgency ordinance. There's people that I know that were never inspected, period. There's people I know that had been requested inspection. They were out of town. No follow-up was done. I'm not blaming county staff. This was a monumental task. I mean, it's, it's been apparent from day one, from sheriff's department, code compliance, building, planning. This was a feat that I don't think any of us were prepared for. Many industry members weren't prepared for it. So, again, my concern lies in different standards applied to different applicants. It sounds like, you know, judging from a prior incident where Mr. Mineheart of code compliance was able to come on the property, from a prior incident at a different parcel that Mr. Maddox owns, where he allowed code compliance onto the property, it doesn't seem to me in any way, shape, or form, he was trying to block them from accessing. And again, you know, we're, we're targeting an individual here where there's other folks out there that were completed differently. And as a property owner and a citizen of this county, I've got issues with unequal treatment. And if we can chalk that up to short staff, you know, overloads of work, so be it. I don't think it was malice, but I think there has been unfair treatment among applicants. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Jennifer Smith. To echo some of what Mr. Bolger just said, there's documented facts and I think that maybe the planning commission should take some time and pull some very specific files. There are farms out there that have been requested to be inspected and they too have been too busy for inspection and this has gone on for over six months. I think that you need to look up farm numbers three-ten, three-eleven, three-twelve, eight-nineteen, eight-twenty, nine-oh-seven. Those have been, had requests for inspections dating as far back as December. So, I think it's unreasonable to deny one farm their application when they had approximately three, four weeks to meet the inspector. Farm number two-seventy-seven was inspected without anybody on site. They received a phone call seven to ten days after their inspection with a list of the corrections that needed to be made. So, right-of-entry has been given to the code inspectors. They have business licenses that also give them right-of-entry. And I don't think all efforts were made on behalf of Jeremy Maddox, or on behalf of the code inspectors to meet with Jeremy Maddox at his property. Furthermore, within that five weeks, we knew that it was winding down. Jeremy said he was available on June sixth and June seventh, and we know that inspections were done on June seventh. So, the urgency ordinance didn't end at midnight on the sixth. Inspectors could have come out on the seventh. Thanks.
I'm going to finish Prepona's statement. He wanted to point out that nobody called to set up an appointment at his grow. They just showed up. So, I think that's pretty much what he wanted to stand, stand up and say. And I do want to echo people's concerns that people have not all had the same standard. You know, it has, people, exceptions have been made in places I was very surprised exceptions were made. Other people, it seems like one small infraction, they get denied. So, we're all human. I think everyone has done their best, both on the county level and on the growers that are sincere in wanting to comply. And I wish more emphasis was placed on people's good faith efforts and that we didn't, that we aren't eliminating people from this program arbitrarily or punitively or, you know, I just wish there was more consistency. And I'm also really sad that so many people in my neighborhood were raided this week who are all medical patients who shouldn't be having their lives upended. And that's a different issue, but anyway, I hope that you put him back to pending status. Thank you.
Could you give us your name for the record?
Beth Whitkey, District Five.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any further public comment? Okay, seeing that, I will close the public comment and I'd like to come back for rebuttal with staff.
I don't have anything.
Well, Tom Watts walked in and I believe it's probably because he wants to say something.
We'd certainly have some questions for him.
I don't have anything further to add, but if you've got any questions, then feel free to fire away.
Mr. Watts, were, were you here when the applicant was talking about his conversation with you?
Uh, no, I don't believe so. I was in the field.
All right. At that, during your conversation in May of this year, May seventeenth, now what, what prompted your call to him?
We had a list of sites that hadn't been inspected yet and we were trying to get through those inspections.
Well, as I understand it, this was inspected in two thousand sixteen or something and there'd been corrections made?
I wasn't aware of a previous inspection.
Okay, that's-
Tell us an inspection is a result of a fire. It was not the cannabis cultivation inspection? We hadn't started-
Code, code compliance inspecting, but-
As a result of a fire, not because of, you know, we hadn't actually initiated our, our inspection program yet at that point in time.
Courtney Meyer was called out there by the fire marshal.
I see. And when you were talking with the applicant on May seventeenth, what was said as far as alternative dates and, and when did he say he could be available?
I believe I gave him a few dates either late, was it later that week or the following week? And he said that he could do it on June seventh, I think. I told him that we needed to do it sooner than that and said I was going to schedule it for the thirtieth. And he said he would call back to confirm.
And he said what?
He would call back to confirm it.
To confirm the thirtieth?
The thirtieth, mhm.
And why would June seventh not have been an appropriate date?
It seemed to me that it defeated the point of conducting the inspection in the first place. We were still trying to process the applications and doing the inspection on the final day of the program just seemed redundant.
And have, have inspections been made since June seventh under this program?
Not that I'm aware of.
There, there was one reference to the particular farm by, by a member of the public. You're not, you're not familiar with any inspection?
Unless we've done a follow-up, like a code complaint inspection, maybe something like that.
There's been no site inspections done since May thirtieth?
Oh, no, since June seventh, sorry.
No, so after June, May thirtieth, were there any site inspections done?
Oh, there may well have been. I can't remember.
Okay. So, are you done with your questions? I don't want to interrupt.
Just, so, the conversation on May seventeenth, you explored alternative dates. He said he was not available with our alternative. Did you suggest that you could go out by yourself? Is there, was there a physical problem with accessing this property if he had said, if he had volunteered? Well, here's the combination for the, for the gate. Go out and take a look anytime. Would there have been a problem with that?
No, that wouldn't have been a problem. Equally, I didn't think to ask him, "Can we just have the gate code to get in?" But that wasn't volunteered either.
So, that there wasn't really a problem as far as physical access to the property other than there was the locked gate and the fence, but I mean, it's not-
Yeah.
-not wild animals outside the fence or anything, is there?
Not that I'm aware of, no.
Right. Thank you.
What would you be looking for that late in the inspection process since at that point in time, we were over sixty days into telling people, "Tear down your products and get everything put away." What inspection are you doing and what are you looking for this late in the game?
A lot of people were still growing at that point. And obviously, if everything is up to code, then all we have to do is sign off on it. They can go back to planning and could have been approved.
So, the urgency ordinance, although the ordinance itself expired, it had a provision that allowed people to continue to cultivate for ninety days. And so, that's what we were inspecting for, was, you know, were they in compliance with the provisions of the ordinance to allow them to continue for the nine days after the expiration of it?
And I just want to point out that the ninety days, whether or not the urgency ordinance expired, the ninety-day period was also carried over into the, into the ban. It might have referred back to the promise made in the urgency ordinance, but the ban did provide for ninety days of continued growing.
So- So, we were doing inspections up until the last day of, which was June sixth, of the program, which then expired on the seventh.
So, and you're, and the, the position of the department is, is that the urgency ordinance itself may well have, or did expire in February.
February fourteenth, yes.
But since there was this authority to continue growing, there was at least an implied power, if not specifically in the ban ordinance, implied power- power, if not specifically in the ban ordinance, implied power to continue the enforcement standards during that ninety-day period. Is that...
Yes, that was our position.
Fair.
Madam Chairman.
Yes.
I really have to leave.
Okay.
And this is going to take a while.
Okay. Thank you. I'm sorry. Okay, so Mr. Wooster had a previous thing that he had to attend to, and he had warned me that he'd have to leave at noon, so I apologize. Okay, so he offered June seventh, and you weren't doing inspections on June seventh. When did inspections end?
Point of order, that.
Yes.
Inspection's where?
That's not a point of order.
Okay, hold on a second. Okay, you were providing information. A point of order would be if we did something incorrect. Thank you. Okay. So my question was, you had indicated that we weren't doing inspections after June seventh?
Yes.
Except I think he indicated that there may have been some follow-up inspections.
We may have done other regular code compliance, you know, visits, inspections, whatever you want to call them.
Did anybody at any point in time, you or Mrs. Davis, tell him that if you don't allow us in today, you're going to be denied because we're stopping inspections? Was he given the option of this is it, or you're done?
No, I didn't tell him that, because I scheduled it for the thirtieth, and I assumed he was going to make arrangements to facilitate that inspection.
Did he mention to you that his daughters were graduating, and that he wouldn't be able to do that?
He mentioned that he was busy.
Okay, okay.
I'm sorry, he mentioned what?
He was busy.
He mentioned that he was busy for the next few weeks.
Okay, is there any further questions for Mr. Watts or Ms. Davis?
Well, I guess I would ask Ms. Davis if you could come back up. If you could just kind of flesh out the conversation you had with him on the thirtieth. Up and, you had no indication that he was not going to be available on the thirtieth, you personally?
Correct. I was just told that there was an inspection for the thirtieth that had been set up.
And so?
And so I called to let him know, I'm leaving the office, to let him know that I was on the way, and then he said that he was not going to be there.
Okay. Did you tell him that if he didn't allow access on May thirtieth, that he would be denied?
I gave him multiple dates that we were available, and to pick a time, basically, okay, I have these dates available before the end of the deadline, which I believe was the seventh. So we would have been doing inspections if we were able to get onto the properties by the seventh. He said he wasn't going to be able to do it until after the eleventh, or he wasn't available until the eleventh. Said that's after the deadline, so we were no longer doing any inspections on there, and that I would update planning with the status of this. I didn't tell him, nope, you're done, or anything like that, because he'd been given multiple opportunities to try and set up an inspection, in my opinion, and he just wasn't cooperating. He was very argumentative. It was difficult to talk. So there just came a point where I couldn't say anymore.
It sounds like he gave Mr. Watts the option of June seventh?
I don't, I'm not aware of that, and if he would have, I put the dates that I told him, because I might try, wrote them down just to make sure that I remembered what dates I told him. So if that was the date on my statement here, then that was an option that he was given. It looks like he was given the, that's Tom's. Fourth, fifth, and sixth. I didn't discuss anything on the seventh, and if I did, I really don't recall, but those were the dates that I gave him.
So did you do other inspections that entire week as well?
I may have. I don't recall exact, but I know that we were contacting people via phone, because sometimes we'd go to these properties, we couldn't get in. This particular property, he does have a twenty-acre parcel, and it's spread across, like the growhouses are not all in one specific area or anything. It's spread across the property. So if I was to climb over the fence, I'd have to walk an unknown amount of time and to where to do this inspection. So we were calling, because we were greeted with gates we couldn't get into, properties that we couldn't get into, because we didn't know how far away anything was, and just to be walking around on somebody's property is not...
Did all the others get denials too, because you couldn't get access that week?
I don't know of, I can't recall any specific things at this time. And, yeah, I can't recall that. I do not know.
Okay.
Did you explore with the applicant alternatives to his being there? I mean, somebody else, whether somebody else was available, or if you were to be given a code, or how you would find the various grows, et cetera?
I don't, I don't believe so. Again, he was very difficult to talk to, and so when he said he wasn't going to be there, I said, okay, so then these are the other dates, because that's what we did. We tried to give alternate dates, and he just wasn't available for it. I didn't talk about the gate code, but again, I was going back to the terrain of the property and how laid out it is. It's across the twenty acres, so it's just really far. And like I said, wandering across people's property that far, especially when he said, no, I'm not going to be there, and I want, wants to be there for the inspection, I take that as you're not allowed on my property. So I'm not going to risk somebody saying, hey, you're coming on my property after I told you to, so...
He indicated that he wanted to be there for the inspection?
That was my impression, yes.
Your impression, okay.
Okay.
Yeah, I'd like to follow up, and when you said he was very difficult to talk with, and I think he said earlier he was argumentative?
Yeah, I mean, I understand that he's busy, but I still have a job to do too, but just even, he was just very, in my opinion, he was very argumentative and condescending towards me. There's, just he really didn't want to deal with me. He really didn't want to talk to me, and he didn't, I didn't feel like he wanted to work with me after I had given him these dates. And at that point, I don't know what else to do. I've dealt with lots of people and tried my best to work with, but we have a schedule, and we have certain dates that we work and times that we work. So even saying I'm going to be available on the seventh at six P.M., we don't work at six P.M. So, and that's outside of business hours, regular business hours. And I believe our right-of-entry too, even if he said, yeah, you can come on at that time, is only during business hours. I think that's in there, so...
You heard him talking about the significant family situations that were going on at that time. Did he mention any of those specific items in these, in that conversation, or any conversation you had with him?
He said that he was busy, that he did have a lot of things going on, but I wasn't aware that he actually had that conversation too with Tom or anything, that that was brought up until then. I kind of came in on the thirtieth, and that's what was handed to me. So I don't know what was before that.
One of the people in the public, one of the public comments said that there had been other farms that have had delays of many months for inspections. Are you familiar with that situation?
I can't cite unspecifics. I know that when you have a year till something expires, things are a little bit easier to say, okay, you're, and that and vacations, that we got a lot of, I'm on vacation for a month, and there's nobody out there, or off-seasons and things like that. So there's a lot of different factors that play into that, as to why things are delayed, and it's a case by case. So in this case, he was given a couple weeks to try to schedule an appointment, and nothing worked for him, and that's really all we can do on that side of it. I don't know unless we stay for work afterwards to try to set up an inspection with someone, but we'd have to get approval for all that.
Were you told to inspect this particular person's farm because of his public statements about the ban ordinance?
No, this farm had not been inspected. It was on the list of to be inspected, and that would be why he was contacted for an inspection, because he had not had that inspection yet.
Thank you.
Any further questions? Okay. Mr. Maddox, we're going to let you come back up and do rebuttal.
Again, I was making it clear, and I was available for June seventh. I just received a document from a fellow farm, registration two-zero-one-six-six-three-five, and this is a Calaveras County Code Compliance Inspection Sheet, initial inspection sheet dated June seventh. Again, I was not, I was not there. I wasn't available. Our other property, our other cannabis farm is four-six-nine, and I've spoken to Thomas Watts on the phone from that property twice. He's been there, and I've never received anything but a letter last week or two, a month ago, stating that that property was not, they were not able to get to it, and it's neither approved nor denied. So thus, I'm wondering why it's not the same for this property after two and a half years almost. Again, I was available on the seventh, and I'd like to request that we put this behind us and put this back to pending. Thank you.
Your property at four-six-nine, was that inspected? It was, you said earlier.
Thomas Watts called me from the gate on two different occasions a little over a year ago, and I asked, why didn't you call me? Why didn't you, he stated that he had called my wife's cellphone, which I didn't find any record of that as well, since my number is primary and I answered.
But was it inspected?
Yes, Thomas Watts and some public health, I believe, was actually telling my property care manager there. They were actually glad to see we had a recycle center and bathrooms and the permit inspection, inspection sheet posted up.
So it was a clean, you got issued on that one? You got approved, okay.
No, no, did not get approved. I had good kudos over the phone, but there was never any follow-up letter. There was never anything given back to me on that property.
So you had no corrections and no denial?
No denial, no corrections. I have a letter stating it was just, they didn't have time to get to it. And I think that maybe perhaps it was that the code was next door with some other meth labs that were being complaint-driven, and they happened to be closed by proxy to other farms, and they just knocked on my gate and were allowed in. So again, June seventh, I was available. I have documentation here that I can't print showing it. If you'd like to see it, something you want to pass around.
Yeah, we can't do, we can't do electronics. Okay.
But we can believe that you just read something.
And you quoted a farm number too as well. Okay. If there's no further questions or comments, I'm going to go ahead and close the hearing. Do you have anything? Okay. Do you have anything further to say, closing? Nope?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so bringing it back for deliberations.
Well, I have had a very hard time with this one. I think that both the county and the applicant could have been more forthcoming with each other as far as working something out. However, since this, this process started on May seventeenth, I finally have come to the conclusion that the applicant's by offering that the county could inspect it after June sixth, that was within a reasonable time of this, of when this inspection procedure started. And so I, although I have considerable sympathy for the county and having somebody say, I'm busy for the next two weeks, and not coming up with alternatives, I think on the other hand, the county didn't explore alternatives that could have been made to make this property available. So I'm rather reluctantly prepared to approve the appeal.
The county did offer him June sixth?
But whatever his date was, June seventh, was it?
According to her.
We have, we have indications that inspections were made after the ninety-day period was expired, and that has weighed heavily into my decision.
Okay, but she was, she did offer him June fourth, June fifth, and June sixth, and he said he wouldn't be available at that time until after the eleventh.
I heard differently.
I did too.
I heard that Mr. Maddox offered June sixth after six, or at six P.M., which is after working hours, and then he offered this, the seventh? I thought he said the seventh. He offered.
She broke down in her deposition that he offered her, she offered him the fourth, the fifth, the sixth, and he stated he would not be available till after the eleventh. He said he would be available on the seventh.
His testimony that I heard, or maybe I misheard.
Was the seventh?
The six P.M. on the sixth or the seventh, and I don't know. I think the seventh, he didn't say what time. I too think this is largely a case of communication failure by more than one person. I really resent some of the comments that, or suggestions, or actual accusations that the county's been arbitrary in this matter, that this is a poster child doing it right. No, he hasn't done it right. He didn't get hoop permits. He didn't get electrical permits. They had a fire. It may have been caused by bad installation. I don't know. Grading permit, he hasn't followed, he hasn't dotted all his I's or T's. Nevertheless, he's done everything we've required, one way or the other, and the three-week time period is the part that probably bothers me the most. That's not a lot of time if we are having graduations and this and that. I do think Mr. Maddox could have been a little more explicit in explaining his reasons, because quite frankly, I would have been pretty irritated if I were the code compliance person, and you tell me you can't let us in in two weeks, or in the next two weeks, that, and maybe you were irritated possibly because of reasons that had nothing to do with the inspection. Yeah, life goes on, and sometimes it's de-hectic, and it sounds like you did have that situation. So at this point, I'm going to, I am going to allow the appeal, uphold it a bit reluctantly, though. I think in the future, if we do in fact get through this stage, I would suggest you communicate a little better with them, and you guys can do the same. If we ever come back, who knows?
I actually agree with them, except for I have two things that you said that bothered me the most. I was not going to sacrifice any time to this two-year fiasco. So that tells me when they were calling you, you weren't going to sacrifice any of your time to make sure your inspection got done. I'm going to side with the county on this.
Kelly, what would you like to vote on?
Just want to correct something that Commissioner Latish said, was that inspections were done after June seventh. The code compliance officers continued to do inspections, but they were not the routine inspections for compliance with the urgency ordinance. So I just want to make sure that was clear, that, you know, code compliance officers indicated they continued to do inspections, but they may be on sight of cultivation registrations, but they were for other issues, not for the purpose of conformant with the urgency ordinance.
But is the county's position that it no longer had jurisdiction to make such?
The program ended on June seventh. All funding associated with the program ended on June seventh. So any inspection that were done, were done for the purposes of code compliance, not for the urgency ordinance and the marijuana program.
So, so you're saying jurisdiction to make such inspections ended?
June seventh.
I mean, that's, that's...
I don't know. I don't... I don't know, I, I don't want to get into, you know, technical terms of, you know, jurisdiction or not. We stopped making code, we stopped making inspections for cannabis cultivation after June 7th. But inspections continued, and in some cases, they were for hoop houses, or electrical permits, or other things like that associated with the grows, but not for the purpose of compliance with the ordinance.
The ordinance, I see.
They were for compliance with building code, or electrical code, or whatever other code issues there were.
So that, that would have been an option here to do that inspection?
And the planning department stopped taking action with regard to whether or not, stop approving or denying. On June 7th, we said, "Okay, that's it, we're done." All those, the remaining ones got a letter that said we were unable to complete the review. You were in compliance during the, assumed compliance during the period of, of the program, you were neither approved nor denied. And so it was, there was no point in making further inspections after June 7th, other than for compliance with other code requirements.
Back to me. I think that, out of all fairness, there's a whole lot of people that got a free pass. And he was at the very end of his lifeline, and he gets stripped of it because he had life happening, graduations, children. I know that everybody's still going to get inspected, you're not off the hook here, everyone's going to have to still be in compliance with getting their property cleaned up, that was just part of the rules, and inspections will continue. And I know you know that they're going to contact you, and they're going to still want to inspect you. I just, I just think it was handled, probably both sides probably could have been a little more agreeable to work something out. But I also think at the last minute to do this to people is kind of hard for me to, to work through. I mean, no one's getting a, "Here, you're approved, keep growing, you're done. The ban went into place, you're done." So now it's just a matter of, are you going to get the pass that says we're no longer denying or approving any of the grows? I think, I think that sticks with me, that we could have worked something out to get a better, a way to get appointments and get people in. At the last minute to give somebody a denial, I think, was kind of harsh. I think when there's other ones out there that have had the opportunity for inspections and weren't inspected to go and target one person, for me was just, I don't like it. So I am going to uphold the appeal with the appellant. So at this point, I guess what we need to do is read the recommendation, or at least poll and see where we're at. I think we had three upholding the appellant's decision, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. So we would be upholding the appellant's decision here?
So the option at this point would be then to maybe declare your intent and direct us to come back with a revised resolution at the next meeting, we put that on consent calendar. Or if you've got some quick wording changes that we can make right now, you could take action now.
Help me a little bit. Why do we have to have a new resolution? Why can't we just say we...
Well, you should establish the basis of the action. And so, you know, we have some notes from the conversation that you have, but, you know, right now, it's supporting the denial, so we'd have to sort of reverse that in some way.
Can we, can we take a little bit longer lunch and maybe just come back with something just to put it behind us?
I mean, we're talking here about rushing to get the inspection. I would like to give the planning department sufficient time to be comfortable with what, trying to make sense out of what we've said.
So the motion would then be something to declare your intent to grant the appeal, directing us to have to come back with a revised resolution at the next hearing.
Right, based on the fact that we think that dates could have been accommodated one way or the other, that we think it was a short time to accommodation for, for getting those dates done? And I think that's what you're looking for, is the reason for the denial to justification?
Right, yeah, yes.
Okay.
I think it might mention, or at least think about mentioning, the specific personal schedule conflicts that arose, rather than just making a blanket, or implying a blanket rule that everybody can get three weeks or more.
I would agree with you.
Got to be careful on that one.
That's what we'd like, a little time to craft it carefully.
Okay, we're good with that.
Can I just say, "I so move," without getting into my usual problems of restating it? "I so move."
Okay, so...
I'll second that.
Thank you. All in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed? So that will come back as a consent agenda item on the 26th?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. We have one hearing left, and it's 12:25. We can take a 15-minute break, or we can go to lunch and come back. What do you guys want to do? We can just wrap up, keep going? Let's keep going and wrap it up, but we'll take a 10-minute break so people can use the restroom.
I'm not sure the appellant is even in the room.
What?
I'm not sure the appellant is even here.
Or the representative.
Or representative. And this was continued once before.
Twice?
Twice before.
It's twice.
Twice. Yeah. Let's take a quick break, then maybe come back, and then we can go to lunch afterwards.
All right, let's bring the meeting back to order. We have item number 6, 2016-949, appeal by Matthew Arribey. So apparently, we don't have an appellate or his consultant here, so we need to, have we heard from Mr. Arribey?
I have not heard from Mr. Arribey or his representative.
I don't know how many hours I've spent relearning this case.
Okay, so do we want to continue to have the hearing today with no representation?
Yes.
All right. So we're...
Longer's fast.
We're going to continue on, and Ben, would you like to carry forward with us, please?
Yes, this is appeal 2016-949 by Matthew Arribey on behalf of Huntington Park's Cannabis Providers Association. This project was denied for failing to provide a seller's permit by September 7th, 2016. In the review of the file, staff found that a seller's permit hadn't been provided by that deadline, and sent a missing requirements letter to them. And as a result, a seller's permit was faxed into the planning department on March 24th, 2017. However, upon reviewing that through the Department of Tax and Fee Administration's web portal, it was found that, that seller's permit had been open and closed on July 1st, 2016, and was therefore not valid. And as a result, the project was denied.
I think additionally, it was for a different location, it was for a site in Riverside. And so the, you know, not only was it not valid timewise, but it was not valid for the site.
Was that a consolidated permit?
No.
Okay. So I could ask for the appellant if they want to speak, but they're not here, so we know that's not going to happen. I can ask for public comment, there is nobody in the chambers, so I don't believe there's going to be any public comment. I will close that since nobody's going to the mic. And I will bring it back to the commissioners to have discussion.
First, I want to make sure that we put on the record, sorry ma'am, that this is the third hearing we have had for these people. The first, he, they asked for continuance. The second, the attorney got in a, some kind of accident, or sorry, not the attorney, the consultant got into an accident, and she couldn't make it, so this is the third hearing we're having for them.
I'd also like to add to that, that we've had no communication since the prior continuance indicating that there's, you know, a need for further continuance.
But you did have a communication to, to, you told them about this date certain.
Yes, notice was sent to the appellant, the representative, and the landowner.
Thank you.
Okay. And then, my thing is, the, when you look at a copy of the seller's permit that's in the package, it is to the wrong address, so he never submitted the correct permit, and we don't have any indication that he did otherwise. Okay?
One question I would have is, when we get to the resolution, is, it is worded as if the urgency ordinance is still in effect. And one thing, I haven't seen a revised resolution for this, we need to have a whereas clause in there about the continuance to this date. But I think then also, we need, in the resolution part, I have a hard time with us continuing to say Calaveras County Code Section so-and-so states as if it were still in effect. And I would think that we should say, prior to such-and-such a date, it provided that, and then the, when we say registrant did not provide, or registrant did not do these things, we should say during the time that this ordinance was in effect, he did not provide. So that makes clear that, that we're not relying upon a violation of an ordinance that's no longer in effect.
Just so you know, Ben, we did not, I don't know about Lisa, but the rest of us did not get a new one, so we just...
I was for them, I brought some fresh ones.
Yay. You let him go on that long, and you had those the whole time?
I wasn't sure if everyone had got it. I was aware that Commissioner Pacelli may not have gotten one of them, but that was the only commissioner we tried.
You don't have to explain yourself, we forgive you.
So the resolution does reflect that?
It has the whereas.
And the dates were changed, yeah.
Yeah, the whereas.
Thank you.
Anyhow, if I'm off-base about the, the other, I'm ready to be corrected, but I think we ought to...
I have not changed it to a more past tense.
Yeah, I think that's, that it's, it's clear, so we make it clear that the law prior to such-and-such a date was such-and-such, and that during that period, he failed to do these acts that were required under that law.
And while we're discussing possible changes in the next-to-the-last whereas, talks about the automobile accident, unless we verify that, I would suggest that we say allegedly involved.
I agree.
Unless we verify it, if she actually was involved.
Taking no steps to verify it.
So do we have a suggestion on how to mention, other than past tense, saying the code section stated, is there something else we should say that, about the latest version of whatever is allowing the 90 days and all, whatever else we're going to...
Well, I think the tricky thing is stating when this section was in effect. Because, I mean, we have this, it expired as, I mean, at least these violations occurred before February 13th, so there's no, there's no problem with the violation that occurred after the expiration of the urgency ordinance and, but during the 90-day extension period. And that's kind of a dicey area to, to deal with. I was coming up with language that was referring to the, what, June 6th or June 7th, the last of the, of the grace period, but I'm not sure that that's all.
It doesn't, I mean, it doesn't look like we have to change that much, we could just say former Calaveras County Code Section 17 dot 95.
That's good.
Et cetera. And then the rest of it is the...
Well, then I, then to start the, where you say the registrant did not provide, you just say during the time that ordinance was in effect.
Sure, that works.
That would do it.
Yeah.
You just have to do that on both of the violations. I'm happy.
All right, you want to read the recommendation, please?
Yes. Staff recommends that the planning commission adopt resolution 2018-042, thus denying appeal 2016-949, thereby upholding the planning director's denial of application 949. That resolution is, of course, as amended.
Thank you, okay.
As amended.
He said that.
Okay.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Done. Okay, we're going to move on to no action items, no...
And just for the record, this action is final in this appeal to the board of supervisors within 15 calendar days.
Thank you. Commissioner reports?
I have one personal report that I have the second happiest day of my life. The first, and most happy day, was buying a boat, and the second, when you sell a boat. I just sold mine.
But you're still married?
That's why, that's why I'm still married.
Okay, so I have to say that Arnold had its Independence Day parade, and it was a pleasure to be watching the parade and have Commissioner Lattish marching down the road. That was awesome, representing the state park. So is there any planning director reports?
No reports, just one, maybe a comment, and maybe even a request. Commissioner Booster, you know, early on, one of the earlier hearings, had requested some additional documentation. If you think that you need something more that we might have, and you find out, you discover that before the, the meeting, feel free to contact us and say, "Hey, it would be helpful if we had this meeting." We could then share that with you, share that with the appellant, and it might have been able to expedite one of the earlier hearings. So don't, don't hesitate to contact us if you have questions about any of the issues, or you think, gosh, there could be some documentation that you might have that would help us.
But on a quasi-judicial matter, I don't think we can.
I think that comes a little close too, ex parte, if you're talking about giving advice about how to better, how to better prosecute their case. So I understand what Mr. Mauer is trying, attempting to do, but I would hesitate with that.
I know, when I started, I, I spent an hour and a half with Gina before my first meeting about how to, what are plan developments and what's happening, and it was wonderful, and I benefited greatly from it. Only later, when I was thinking about asking department something else, I, I got set straight that that wasn't... If I, if I really look at myself as a judge, and there are two parties appearing before me, I really, I don't think I can...
I guess it's hard for me to, to virtualize the planning commission as a judge, but I understand.
And the appellant could say the same thing, "Why didn't you call me and tell me what I needed to bring to prove my case?"
I, I understand that. Okay, and then, so then, that notwithstanding, okay, never mind.
I'm sorry, I mean, I, it would make things a lot easier.
So we've got a number of ordinances coming up in the future, just sort of, you know, just to clean up. And yesterday, the board adopted the accessory dwelling ordinance.
That's good.
So that was passed unanimously, it goes into effect 30 days, and so that's one tick mark off of our list. Other than that, nothing.
What would you suggest that we be doing? I mean, we have, I have a copy of the draft general plan, now I have a copy of the draft E I R. If, if we have a, like, three-week spare time, should, at this point, would it be good for us to be reviewing those documents, even though the comment period's going on?
Certainly, because, so the end, when, when the comment period closes, we will have a stack of written comments, we will need to respond to those comments, provide the, you know, written response, as well as the, any changes to the draft E I R. as well as the, any changes to the draft EIR. In that document are recommended mitigation measures, and if you don't have time to read the whole thing, I would focus on those sections of the draft EIR, so that you can say, "Okay, these make sense," or, "No, these don't make sense," because that's what you will be asked to weigh in on, a recommendation to the board later this year. Do we add these mitigation measures as new policy or modified policy language, and if not, why?
Great, thank you.
Don't make a final conclusion on that, because obviously, the final EIR will, will help to illuminate, you know, our thinking on that, and whether or not it's, you know, and there may be new information that comes out of that, but certainly focus on those suggested mitigation measures.
Thanks.
I would like to announce that Commissioner Bocelli is going to adjourn this meeting. Thank you. He's been dying to do that.